Okay, thank you for, we're gonna go ahead and get our meeting started. Today is Tuesday, April 4th. This is the Pima County Board of Supervisors meeting. Can I have roll call to establish quorum, please?
Supervisor Bronson.
Here.
Supervisor Christie.
Here.
Supervisor Hines.
Present.
Supervisor Scott.
Here.
Chair Grimalva.
Here, thank you.
Let the record show all members are present.
Thank you so much. We have, um, we can have the pledge of allegiance. We have a guest here and so, I'm sorry. And this is Maria Romero. She's a senior buyer with procurement department and she's gonna lead us in the pledge. Did you wanna go closer to the mic?
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Maria. Well, if you could remain standing, I would like to ask for a moment of silence for Maria Asedo. She's a 24-year veteran of the Pima County Assessors Office and she tragically passed on Sunday. Thank you. My thoughts and prayers go out to the Asedo family and all of the team members that are mourning her loss, family and friends. Thank you. Then we have the land acknowledgement statement and I believe we have a video for that.
Good morning. My name is Rosemary Leva and I work for the Clerk of the Board's Office, Division of Management of Information and Records. I've been a county, I've been a Pima County employee for 37 years now. On behalf of Pima County residents, we honor the tribal nations who have served as caretakers of this land from the time immemorial and respectfully acknowledge the ancestral's homelands of the Tahoma Autumn Nation and the multi-millennial presence of the Pasca-Yaki Tribe within Pima County. Consistent with Pima County's commitment to diversity and in conclusion, we strive towards building equal partner relationship with Arizona Tribal Nation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leva. And then I do have a point of personal privilege and I know that Supervisor Scott does also, so I'll go ahead and let you have the opportunity, please.
Thank you, Chair Grimalva. Last night, we had the second of our five spring town halls. Some of the citizens who attended are here today. There were times during the evening that the attendees disagreed with each other. There were times during the evening that all of us, myself included, would have benefited from listening more than we talked. However, there was never a time that I did not feel the public discourse was both civil and reasonable. My sincere hope is that those in attendance last night will continue to attend our town halls and our board meetings so that their voices can be heard. I know that the five of us can also engage in difficult conversations because of the serious and challenging topics we have to consider and discuss. But I think all of us are tremendously blessed to be five people in a county of over a million people making decisions that affect the quality of lives of everybody in our community. And I genuinely believe and have always believed that each one of the four of you is doing this work because you want our community to be, community to be a better place to live and work. I generally admire and respect each one of the four of you. And let's always be mindful of the fact that the ways that we engage with each other sends messages to our community about public discourse and how it should be conducted. Thank you, Chair Grimalva.
Thank you, Supervisor Scott. And so I just wanted to take the opportunity to, during this first full week of April every year, the American Public Health Association observes National Public Health Week. It's time to recognize the contributions of the public health and highlight issues that are important to improving our nation's health. This week, Pima County Health Department is highlighting some of the amazing programs within the department and with our partners and to recognize public health professionals throughout the community. The Health Department staff work hard to provide an array of services to the community, not only through clinics, but also through mobile vaccination events, collaborative collaboration with community-based organizations and mobile vaccinations and other outreach events. Thank you. And then we have, anyone else? Pause for pause.
Hi, everybody. My name's Monica Dangler. I am the director here at Pima Animal Care Center. And today for pause for pause, I wanted to introduce you to my friend, Lady Pickles. Lady Pickles is a little different than most of the dogs you're gonna typically meet. And it's not because she's a husky, we've got lots of those. It's actually because she is currently not available for adoption. She won't be available till later this summer because Ms. Pickles here is on wildlife observation. What that means is she had a little encounter with a havelina. And because we don't know she was a stray, we don't know if she ever had a rabies vaccine, we have to keep her here at the shelter for 120 days to make sure she's okay. So please remember, get your pets vaccinated, get a rabies vaccination. That will help keep them safe in case they do have an encounter and will allow them to stay in their home in case an accident happens. Thank you, guys. Come down to pack. We can't wait to see you. We've got 390-some dogs here ready for adoptive homes or foster homes. Hope to see you soon. Bye.
Thank you. And now we have, I'm gonna turn it over to the Clerk of the Board for agenda, agenda adjustments.
Okay, so on page eight, item 23, Superior Court, unfinished business from December 6, 2022, Judge pro tempore appointments. Judge Bergen requests this item be removed from the agenda. On page 13, item 54, Development Services, unfinished business from February 7, 2023. It is the hearing type three conditional use permit. The applicant requests this item be continued to the Board of Supervisors meeting of April 18, 2023. On the consent calendar, page 16, item one, Boards Commission and/or Committee, the Pima County Fair Horse Racing Commission, it's the appointment and reappointment item. Staff requests this item be continued to the Board of Supervisors meeting of April 18, 2023.
Madam Chair, I object to that. I don't want it continued.
Supervisor Bronson.
And I will turn it over while I'm asking Mr. Brown. When I moved the appointment of Ms. Dr. Di Filippo, I checked in with the county attorney to see if there was any conflict of interest. At that point, Mr. Brown informed me there was not. So I do not understand the reason for continuance and I have put on the record and given it to the clerk, a letter I received from Dr. Di Filippo. She is a racehorse owner, but she receives no remuneration from Pima County for horse racing. And if we are going to go over conflicts of interest, I just refer to the Affordable Housing Commission where we have two members sitting on there who are developers and they are, the, the commission is looking into an item where they may wanna bid and I think that's a conflict. And I think if we're going to deal with conflicts, then perhaps we need to look at all the boards, commissions and committees. So I am very opposed to having this item continued. I do not understand the reason for it. When I spoke with Mr. Brown, he assured me there was no conflict, so I'm perplexed.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Supervisor Bronson. Without getting into content of our discussion, there have been, there has been a new development. Our office is recommending that we look into the new development and new information before proceeding, but again, it is up to the board.
What is that new development?
There's been a communication that we wanna look into before providing further.
Well, then I would suggest that with our two appointments, and one is a reappointment, that we continue both of them until the next meeting and look into conflicts. And I think frankly, if, well, I'm just perplexed. You assured me there was no conflict and I checked with you.
Mr. Brown?
Chair, Grimalva, Supervisor Bronson, again, it is at the pleasure of the board. It's not my call if this item gets moved or not, but it is our recommendation that we take time to look into this matter, but.
Well, have you ever looked into the history of our each a racetrack?
I think, so I guess the recommendation is to remove the item. We'll leave it on the item. I'm gonna request that we pull it before we vote and then we can have a discussion there. Does that make sense? Okay, thank you. All right, go ahead.
Okay, so just for clarification, this item will not be continued, correct? We're going, you guys are going to take it in regular session?
Yes, we're gonna have a discussion.
Okay, and the other amendment is addendum agenda, page one, item two, the executive session item. This is discussion of the type two or type three conditional use permit. The county attorney's office requests this item be continued to April 18, 2023.
Okay, thank you. All right, so now we're on to presentation and proclamation. Item five is the presentation proclamation to Kimberly Peot, CEO of Parkinson Wellness Recovery, proclaiming the month of April 2023 to be Parkinson's Awareness Month. And this is District Three?
I'll move the item.
I'll second. Have motion in the second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Okay, Supervisor Bronson.
And who's here to receive it? Kimberly, there you are.
Thank you.
All right. Whereas Parkinson's disease is a neuro, neurodegenerative disease that causes tremors, limb rigidity, slowness of movement and balance and gait difficulties. And whereas Parkinson's disease is the fastest growing neurological disease with recent studies showing that the number of people diagnosed each year is 50% higher than previously estimated. That's an amazing stat. And whereas Parkinson's disease affects more than 7,000 people in Pima County along with their families and friends. And whereas living well with Parkinson's disease begins with an increased understanding and awareness of the disease and its progression and the importance of exercise, social, well, the importance of exercise, I think all of us probably could benefit by that, social support, medication and other medicinal, medical interventions. And whereas Parkinson's Wellness Recovery has developed a scientific, research-based approach to movement, exercise and therapy services. And whereas medical research demonstrates that targeted exercise and physical therapy can mitigate the symptoms of Parkinson's disease and offers hope for slowing disease progression for people in Tucson. And whereas Parkinson Wellness Recovery is a center of excellence, training physical and occupational therapists and exercise professionals across the globe in best practice techniques to improve the lives of people with Parkinson's disease. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims the month of April 2023, 2023 to be Parkinson's Awareness Month in Pima County and encourages our citizens to learn more about Parkinson's disease and local organizations, including Parkinson's Wellness Recovery, that support people with Parkinson's disease and their care partners in our community, passed and adopted this fourth day of April 2023. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I know there's a lot of important business today, so I'll be very brief, but thank you so much for, for having us here today. And as Supervisor Bronson noted, that recent statistic actually just came out in December of 2022 from a study showing that the incidence of Parkinson's is 50% higher than we previously thought. So the message here is if you don't already know someone with Parkinson's, you will. And when you do, I hope that you'll remember a gem that we have in Tucson called Parkinson Wellness Recovery, where we train people with Parkinson's like athletes. We challenge them to do more than they think they can do and we teach them how to be resilient as evidenced by one of our members who recently summited Mount Kilimajaro in his seventies. So. I can't disclose his name, no. Yeah, so thank you very much and I hope that we can all be prepared to face this challenge of growing Parkinson's diagnoses in our county in the coming years.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're on item six, presentation of a proclamation to Erin Aguilar, co-president, and Kelly Ann Larkin, Executive Director, the Southern Arizona Association of Education of Young Children, proclaiming the week of April 1 through April 7, 2023 to be the week of the young child in Pima County.
I'll move the item.
I'll second. Have a motion in the second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, item passes unanimously. Supervisor Scott?
Whereas the first years of a child's life are the period of the most rapid brain development and lay the foundation for all future learning. And whereas participation in high-quality early childhood education saves taxpayer dollars, makes working families more economically secure and prepares children to succeed in school, earn higher wages and live healthier lives. And whereas high-quality early childhood education depends on high-quality educators who ensure that children, supported by families, have the early experiences they need for a strong foundation. And whereas young children need skilled, educated, competent, consistent and well-compensated early childhood educators. And whereas society benefits when working families have access to robust subsidies, scholarships and tax credits that support the true costs of quality early childhood education. And whereas early childhood educators need the ability to earn a family sustaining wage that is commensurate with the required education and skills they bring to the complex and valuable work they do. And whereas First Things First, the Arizona Association for the Education of Young Children, the Southern Arizona Association for the Education of Young Children and other community organizations in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children are celebrating the 52nd anniversary of the Week of the Young Child. And whereas these organizations are working to improve equitable early learning opportunities that provide a strong start for children in Pima County, now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims the week of April 1 through April 7, 2023 to be the week of the young child in Pima County and urges all members of our community to support efforts that increase access for children and families to high-quality early childhood education. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the Pima County Board of Supervisors for supporting early childhood through the various programs that they have nurtured throughout the years and really emphasize the fact that Pima County supports young children, which therefore supports a solid workforce for the future. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here, Ms. Aguilar. Next is item seven, presentation of proclamation to Caitlin Monje, Director of Southern Arizona Center Against Sexual Assault, Sacasa, proclaiming the month of April 2023 to be sexual assault awareness month and proclaiming the day Wednesday, tomorrow, April 5, to be Wear Teal Day. I will move the item.
Second.
Have a motion in the second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, item passes unanimously. Ms. Monje? I'll hand that to you there.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. So whereas sexual assault is an epidemic across the United States affecting an American adult every 68 seconds and a child every nine minutes. And whereas one in six American women and one in 33 men have been a victim of attempted or completed rape in their lifetime. And whereas sexual violence disproportionately impacts immigrants, people of color, people with disabilities and members of the LGBTQ plus community, nearly half of whom report being sexually assaulted. And whereas April is National Sexual Assault Awareness Month and is signified by wearing the colored teal to support survivors and remind the community that we must work together to promote education, awareness and accountability for sexual violence. And whereas Southern Arizona Center Against Sexual Assault, Pima County, the Pima County Attorney's Office, the University of Arizona and Southern Arizona AIDS Foundation, the Arizona Coalition to End Sexual and Domestic Violence, the Tucson Police Department and other community partners are committed to a comprehensive response to end sexual violence in our community. And whereas this year's theme of Sexual Assault Awareness Month is Demand Equity. Sexual violence affects everyone. We call on individuals, communities, organizations and institutions to challenge ourselves and the system surrounding us to build racial equity and respect so that we may support survivors and speak out against harmful attitudes and actions. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims the month of April 2023 to be Sexual Assault Awareness Month and the day Wednesday, April 5, to be Wear Teal Day in our community and encourages the all residents to wear an article of teal clothing or a teal ribbon to raise awareness of sexual assault and stand in solidarity with sexual assault victims and to support the end of an epidemic of sexual violence. Passed and adopted this fourth day of April 2023. Thank you. Want me to hold this for you or you guys?
I'll see if I can make it work. All right. Thank you so much for fitting this onto your agenda today, Board of Supervisors. I am here representing just one of many organizations who are invested in and committed to supporting and serving survivors of sexual violence in our community. And I'm very proud of our organizations and the work that we do. However, we don't want to have to be good at this work. We don't want to have to be needed. We very much believe that sexual violence is preventable and in order to see our vision come to fruition of our community living free of sexual violence, we know that demanding equity is incredibly important across our organizations and our communities and in our judicial systems. So this commitment from you all to stand with us is so vital and important to us. So thank you so much for your time today. Thank you.
Thank you for being here too. Thank you for being here today. And so, citizens attending the meeting shall observe rules of propriety, decorum, and good conduct. Any person making personal, imporrent, or slanderous remarks, or who becomes boisterous while addressing the board, may be removed by the Sergeant-at-Arms if directed by the Chair. Such person may be barred from further audience before the board. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stomping of feet, whistling yells, and similar demonstrations, shall not be permitted by the Chair, who may direct offenders from the hearing room. This is a list from the Board of Supervisors' Rules and Regulations. Sharon Fix, Robert Royce, and Jim McFrozean. Is Sharon here? Oh, okay.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I'm Sharon Fickers. I'm from Precinct 207 in Green Valley. I'm speaking at first about Jan Lesher's memo dated March 28 to the Board of Supervisors regarding not being, having to be present to vote during the initial, I mean, not being present at the initial roll call. Many items included in her memo had to do with Robert's Rules of Order, parliamentary procedure, Arizona revised statutes, Pima County ordinance, and anything else the administrator could drum up to excuse Matt Hines from disappearing during our voting. Unfortunately, she missed the important issue of when and how can the Board of Supervisors, and especially the Chair, rely on Matt Hines to vote, and can Chair Grihava even hear him voting because we can't see him or hear him? Thank you for being here today, Dr. Hines. You will easily, to hear him. Anyhow, you will easily resolve this issue if Matt Hines just immediately resigns. The issue will go away. Agenda item 11, Addendum 1, Item 1. Exclusion of citizens from the public meeting is the recurring issue this Board is avoiding. The legal opinions of Attorney Brown and Munger Chadwick Danker, PLC, and even Citizen Shirley Ricard's name as a citizen being banned, this is all part of public information. There's no reason to hold an executive session when all the key discussion points are public. We all know about it. Except, the executive session is one way that will allow Chair Grihava to remove herself from discussing this important issue away from the public and away from attendance that we can watch. We need transparency on operations, decisions made by this Board of Supervisors. Please do not have an executive session on this issue. Looking at items 28, 29, 30, 31, 45, totaling over $11 million, all supporting illegals with food, shelter, transportation, and other on today's agenda, is an outrageous use of my federal tax dollars funding by the feds. Unfortunately, this activity has no oversight from the government, our elected officials. I looked at the 22 typical contracts. That was $57 million. We need to provide the same funds, concern, and effort towards we, the people. We will work to change this activity in 11 months during the 2024 primary, when we will vote you out of office. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Royce?
When Thomas Jefferson sat down at his desk at Conrad's boarding house in the still unfinished city of Washington to write his presidential inauguration speech and weight out the Federalist conspiracies, he understood that the issues that he would be dealing with were issues that had been haunting humankind for its entire history, and he also understood that it would continue to haunt humanity far into the future. So, when you listen to this sharp little lecture from Mr. Jefferson today, please remember that these words were meant as much for you and us here today as they were for the people of his generation. All will bear in mind this sacred principle, that while the will of the majority is always to be, to prevail, for that will to be rightful, it must be reasonable, that the minority also possess their equal rights, which equal laws must protect, and to violate would be oppression. Let us then, fellow citizens, unite with one heart and one mind, and let us restore to social intercourse that harmony and affection, without which liberty and even life itself are but dreary things. And let us reflect that having banished from our land that religious oppression under which mankind has for so long suffered and bled, we have gained little if we countenance a political oppression as despotic, as wicked, and as capable of as bitter and bloody persecutions. And finally, every difference of opinion is not a difference of principle. We have called by different names brethren of the same principle. We are all Republicans. We are all Federalists. If there be any here among us who would wish to dissolve this union or change its Republican form, let them stand undisturbed as testaments to the safety with which air or of opinion may be tolerated, where reason is left free to combat it. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim?
Good morning, Madam Chair and fellow Board of Supervisors. I'm a little conflicted today. I had, I have prepared something to speak on, but then I looked at some of the agenda items, and I thought, wow, there's a lot of things here to talk about. But I think I can address those at a future time, so I'll stick with what I had already prepared. I'm going to pen to my conversation or presentation from two weeks ago, which I felt was cut a little short, so hopefully I'll get it in this time. If you recall, I asked how many of you have read the Communist Manifesto written by Karl Marx and Frederick Engels. I further stated I would tie the manifesto with your agenda items at the time in which you already had awarded $3.8 million from the General Fund to aka Visit Tucson, which you had already, which you had already approved by the time I spoke, and in parallel, the City of Tucson's plan, known as Tucson Resilient Together, to spend $326 million of taxpayers' monies to fund what became the 15-minute city with the ultimate goal of eliminating gas-powered vehicles in Tucson. If one takes the time to read the Tucson Resilient Together Plan, and I have, it reads like the Green New Deal. Okay, I've come to the nexus of my presentation, how your award of $3.8 million along with the City of Tucson's plan to spend $326 million for the Tucson Resilient Together Plan, coupled with your decision to exclude citizens from board meetings, interconnected with the Communist Manifesto. Manifesto is basically broken down into four sections, but the section I want to refer you to is Section 2. In Section 2, Marx and Engels go on to state the 10 goals of Communist Party. I am not going to cite all 10, but refer you to number 6 that states, and I quote, "Centralization of the means of communication and transport," transportation in parentheses, "in the hands of the state." Pima County Board of Supervisors, your recent action to exclude a citizen from the Board of Supervisors is no other than centralizing the means of communication in the hands of the state, which is you, which associates, which is, abdicates our First Amendment right of freedom of speech. Furthermore, the uncostful act by you and the City of Tucson to restrict an individual freedom of movement, as in a 15-minute city, is nothing more than centralizing transportation into the hands of the state, you. In closing, I implore all of you to think about your actions and how they impact the people of Pima County and their liberties. This Board's history, as far as I can tell, with the exception of Supervisor Christie, has been nothing short of radical. People who have experienced communism know the end game, and it's not pretty. One of my colleagues who has spoken to you before, sitting right there, escaped with his family and from Cuba in the early 60s, asked him what he saw and how he feels about communism. In fact, he has written a book, which I have here with me today, Socialism: The Walking Dead, The Offer, Raphael Pillow. Thank you.
Thank you. Drew Heaton, led by Jane Hubbard and Elizabeth Moll. Drew here? Jane Hubbard, yes, and Elizabeth Moll, and then Tim Lox.
Good morning. I'm Jane Hubbard from District 1. Supervisor Scott, thank you for the town hall event last night and your willingness to answer the tough questions. You claim we are a highly partisan group of PCs who are coming to these public meetings to voice our comments. As a reminder, each PC in this room represents 125 voters from your district. Your district is comprised of a high number of conservatives, and may I remind you, you won by only 700 votes.
730.
Okay, let's be specific. This Board of Supervisors is comprised of four Democrats and only one Republican, making you quite partisan. Even though you took an oath to be impartial, your voting record speaks for itself. So I'm addressing agenda items number 28, 29, and 30, which is a total of $3,850,000. So this Board is responsible for directing federal funds to the City of Tucson and non-governmental organizations such as the IN of Southern Arizona and the Catholic Community Services. So forward to date, about $26 million had been dispersed by this Board, and this decision today would increase that amount to close to $30 million. Pima County also purchased a facility on Drexel Road, a former telemarketing call center, and leased it to Catholic Community Services. Its grand opening was March 9. The county is responsible for all maintenance and upkeep of this hospitality center, and what is the cost of this upkeep to the county taxpayers? Federal funds are our tax dollars, and we do not approve providing aid and comfort to the enemy who is invading our country. May I remind you again, the apprehensions in the Tucson sector were of individuals from 75 countries other than Mexico, including the hostile countries of Pakistan, Uzbekistan, Yemen, Iraq, and Iran. These are countries where they chant "Death to America." Why do you ignore your oath to protect our county and our country from enemies foreign and domestic? Where are the nefarious plans of these largely military-aged males? It's just a matter of time before we see another 9/11. We're already seeing a huge increase in crime and violent attacks against citizens by people who are in the U.S. illegally. You cannot claim you're not responsible simply because these are federal funds. You can just say no and return these funds. Our federal government is currently over $31 trillion in debt, and this amount is rapidly rising. They are spending money they do not have to fund those who are here illegally. You like to refer to these individuals as legal asylum seekers, but there is nothing legal about them, and true asylum seekers are to seek refuge in the country closest to their own that they are fleeing. They're not to be bused or flown thousands of miles to the U.S. border. Send the federal money back and send these invaders back across the border. Protect us.
Elizabeth Moll? Is Tim Lox here? Okay, great. Then Lori Moore and Steve Selby. Thank you.
I start? Chairman Grihava, Board, my name is Elizabeth Moll. Some of you may remember me from my tenure at TUSD, where I served as Assistant Principal for Curriculum Instruction at Tucson High Magnet School. I was a district-wide curriculum instructor, working with Steve Holmes, and finally was principal of University High School before I retired. Now, as I retire, I am a member-at-large of the Pima County GOP Executive Committee. I come before you today to discuss the Pima County Library Advisory Board. It consists of 10 members, two of which are chosen by each member of you, the Pima County Board of Supervisors. This 10-member Board you select advises the library director for Pima County in making decisions on policy and procedures that directly affect library users. I'm curious if you know the names of those individuals who sit on this Board, and if you meet with any of them to go over their decisions. I do hope you realize five of the 10 members have term expirations coming due June 30th, and currently District 2 has a longstanding vacancy, as does District 4. The advisory board meets monthly, and I plan on attending their meeting this upcoming Thursday, April 6, at the Joel D. Valdez Main Library. Some of my cohorts and I have visited most of the county libraries, and we have asked and unfortunately not been given the answers to two very important questions. What are the guidelines for book selections, and what is age appropriateness determined to be? I was told at one library I could go online under collection development and get this information, which I did at least two weeks ago, and there was nothing to be found. So I sent in a request and to date have gotten no response. In the interest of equity, equality, inclusion, all stakeholders should have representation and voice on this advisory committee, and their questions should be answered in a timely manner. With vacancies and term expirations upon this Board coming up shortly, I expect you will hear from qualified individuals in your respective districts who would like to fill these vacancies. I hope you will recognize the value of their expertise and varied viewpoints, because fortunately or unfortunately, this particular advisory board does much to shape the culture of our community.
Thank you.
Mr. Scott, I'm in your district, and I would like to apply for...
Thank you. Mr. Lox?
My name is Tim Lox. Welcome back, Matt. Glad to see you here, anyway. So I understand the Arizona Legislature transmitted SCR 1037 to the Secretary of State, which eliminates the machines. So maybe you want to start up a little panel on alternatives for your voting system. I understand, I don't know how true this is, but I understand over the weekend a facility was opened up to house some illegals. I don't know any specifics on it. I just heard it last night on a Zoom call. Let me remind you that Proposition 205, voted on by almost 70% of Tucson voters in 2019, was that Tucson will not become a sanctuary city, yet you guys continue to appropriate money. I don't understand why you need to do that. That money could be going to other things, such as something I might suggest here in a minute. It's a disgrace that all this money is going to all of these entities. It's obvious that you care nothing about what the voters want in Pima County. We don't want this to be a sanctuary city. In other matters, the first fentanyl pill pressing house was busted recently in Houston. I don't know if you guys heard that. We have incredible amounts of drugs coming across our borders. I also understand that animal tranquilizers are being mixed in with the fentanyl. I wonder if there are any pressing houses here, pill pressing houses in Tucson. The cartels have military-grade equipment at the borders. Do you guys know that? There are camps that have been destroyed through intelligence passed on to the Mexican Marines, and they've been destroying these camps down there. There are reports of children that crossed the border and were found dead, and their organs harvested. Were you guys aware of that? A small number of Border Patrol agents have been arrested for accepting bribes to turn their heads with the drug trafficking. How about we get Sheriff Nanos in here and to explain what his budget is for the anti-smuggling unit, and what is being done to stop the flow of drugs into Pima County? Adalita, your unconstitutional act to prevent Shirley Ricard from attending Board of Supervisors' meeting is just another tyrannical action and is so typical of communist behavior. It's disgusting. And your Board, and the Board's failure to investigate Matt Hines is also disgraceful. You need to resign, Matt. What you did or what happened is not anything about your personal preferences. It's about how embarrassing that action was to all of us. I've talked to people...
The time has expired. Thank you. Lori Moore?
My name is Lori Moore. I'm from District 1. I am not a sex worker.
I am not a sex worker. Some people think there is nothing wrong with that, even though it is against state and local statutes. I'm going to go over some character traits and I want you to see if you can figure out who I'm talking about. I want you to put the word "pro" in front of everything, so I don't have to say "pro" 25 times. Open borders, drugs flooding in through the border, human trafficking, abortion at any level of development, China, green new steel, crime, failing public schools, school closures, energy dependence, higher food prices, taxes, inflation, unemployment, not investigating election fraud, CRT, racism, believing all women as long as they are Democrat women, mandatory jabs, shutdowns, not following the science, pro Anthony Fauci, pro teacher unions, elevating the status based on gender, real or altered, but not based on ability, abolishing the nuclear family, not following the science, pronouns that change every day, sexualizing children. I could not support any candidate with even one of these characteristics and I'm describing the current Democrat Party. These characteristics are nothing I would vote for. There is no such thing as a moderate Democrat. No one can say, "Oh, I want to help the poor people, but I don't believe in abortion." That party does not exist. You must vote your values and you must leave the Democrat Party. And I'm appealing to my brothers and sisters with a faith-based community. If you believe in life, you cannot vote Democrat. Board of Supervisor Scott, you used to be a Republican. I would like to know what conservative values do you still hold on to and which values have you abandoned in order to do this job? Thank you.
Steve Selvi? And I have Laura Neup, Corey Stevens, and Keith Van Heineken. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Hello, my name's Steve Selvi. I find it ironic that this is the week of the young child at Pima County. We're talking about early childhood education and yet we have a Pima County Public Library that supports sexualization of children and who supports normalization of sexual perversion. What am I talking about? Well, we found over a dozen books I've got, I didn't drag them up here, that are of a sexual nature that are in the children's section or the teen's section of the library. I'm not, just so you know, I'm not calling for banning of books. We get accused of that. I'm not calling for the banning of books. I'm calling for age-appropriate material in our libraries. I don't dislike transgender people. I don't dislike gays. I know that we get accused of that. This has nothing to do with that. I know people who support this seem to feel that this is teaching their kids tolerance and inclusion. My grandchildren are already very tolerant. I don't need to take them to a drag show or talk to them and tell them that a boy can be in the girl's bathroom because he identifies as a girl to make them be more tolerant. So what I wanted to do is just show one book here. I have several of them. This is in more than one of our libraries here, library branches. I'm looking at the table of contents. One of the chapters, "What is masturbation?" "What is climax?" "What is sexting?" "What are kinks, fantasies, and porn?" Okay, then the camera's turned, so we can't see this, but I'm going to hold it up anyways. Pictures here of a man, obviously a man, facial hair, he's got breasts and women's genitals. A woman with breasts and a penis. It gets better. Over here, we've got a diagram showing a girl how to masturbate. Pictures and descriptions. Over here is a picture showing a boy how to masturbate. Descriptions and pictures. Next to it here is a diagram with the description showing how to anally arouse somebody in preparation for anal intercourse. So I ask you, is this appropriate for kids? I don't care if they're teenagers. I am going to point out Supervisor Grijhava, this was shown to you a couple of Board of Supervisor meetings ago. That same meeting where you banned somebody for 90 days for using the word "pedophile", but you said you saw nothing wrong with this. I guess the only difference is the one, never mind.
Laura?
Good morning, everyone. Today I would like to address Matt Heinz and the interview he gave where he said that we behave like children in a sandbox fighting over a shovel. Well, that shovel is our freedom and our rights that globalists like you want to take away from everyone. My father once told me that my grandparents feared my generation would destroy our country, but clearly did not see your generation coming. So while your generation tries to destroy our country and our world, it'll be my generation that will save it. Mark my words. We will never let you destroy our city, our state, our country, or our world and one day our forefathers will be proud of us as well as our future generations. One day you will face the consequences of your actions in front of a tribunal, the treason, the crimes against humanity, and there will be no amnesty. Every time you break the law, the best part about it is you do it right on video, so it'll be used against you later in a court of law. Matt Heinz, you need to be reported to the Medical Review Board. And Sam Brown, you need to be reported to the Arizona State Bar Association. And to our sheriff, you're keeping Shirley out again. And you swore to uphold their constitution and they are violating her U.S. Constitution and Arizona state laws. And by not arresting them for doing this, it is a dereliction of duty. And I suggest you check that out.
Corey Stevens? Can you put that down, please? I don't know why you were allowed in the room with it.
It's freedom of speech. District Two, Corey Stevens, you're probably wondering about my friend who accompanied here today. He's similarly dressed to somebody we've become all too familiar with. Well, he joins me to explain the definition of hypocrisy. You see, had Steve Christie chosen to participate in a meeting via Zoom, had his wife popped up behind him scantily clad in a negligee or bikini, the righteous left on this Board would have immediately demanded his resignation. That is called hypocrisy. The practice of claiming to have moral standards or beliefs to which one's own behavior does not conform. Instead, you choose to ignore the behavior of one because he is a bully and a narcissist. That's right, you're a narcissist. Well, that's just what the left does. You comply and are complicit. You plan to spend $3,849,539 of taxpayer monies to shelter-feed illegal immigrants, which I find to be criminal. In fairness to the leftist ideology of equality and equity, I ask you this. What diseases have these immigrants been vaccinated for? Measles, mumps, rubella, pox, hepatitis, TB, Zika, MERS, polio? What countries have they come from? Like Honduras, Guatemala, Yemen, Pakistan, right? So-called asylum seekers are to seek asylum in the first country they step foot in. That would be Mexico. Unlike Matt Heinz, most of my friends work for ICE, DHS, CBP, Border Patrol, and other law enforcement agencies, not Carnival Cruise Line. Maybe Matt Heinz should volunteer his extra time to check the vaccination status of his new neighborhoods. Okay? If they remain unvaccinated, will you charge them with murder if they spread disease? Equality and equity, right, Matt? Equality and equity, okay? My family members were immigrants as well. They came here in 1892. They did it legally, all right? Germany, they were Jewish, they were Swedish. They came here and they did it legally. My mother is Chinese. She did it through the illegal immigration process and it is illegal for us to house them, okay, and feed them with our taxpayer dollars, okay? The internet is like herpes, Matt. This is not going away, but you should.
Keith Van Heineken, followed by Melissa Conroy and Reverend Howe? Tracy Howe?
Good morning, my name is Keith Van Heineken. I've been a resident of Tucson and Pima County for a quarter century and I never thought I would follow a sex doll. I mean, I've tried. We got trouble. I'd say we got big trouble right here in River City. And I pin it on our failed education system that has created a class of serfs happy in their poverty and decay. To build that people, local government, 100% Democrat control for 78 of the last 83 years. That's why we look the way we do. As far as TUSD in our schools, all you have to do is look directly at Adalita and Raul Grijhva, who I call Papa and Baby Doc. Now Rex, I haven't looked up your scores, but I'm sure they're not very good. And I'd like to say hello, Dr. Heinz, Pima County Board of Supervisor member, and Dr. Cullen in the back of the room. Gribble, 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 gribble. You were wrong on almost everything about COVID. You played along knowingly with the corruption. I ask which is worse, by gribble, gribble, gribble? Sharon, thank you for going nuclear in your opening statement. It is appreciated. I'd like to petition the sheriff to arrest those government officials aiding and abetting in the Biden illegal alien invasion. They are billeting enemy troops in our country. That was the last straw when the Declaration of Independence was written. We, the people, are the community standard. You racists and fascists in government need to be in a prison today.
Melissa Conroy?
My name is Melissa Conroy. I'm a friend of Shirley Ricard. We recently had a sad state of affairs here in Tucson where a communist would-be tyrant in training is tactfully allowed to exercise control over our Board of Supervisors meetings as well as their attorney, Samuel Brown. Rex Scott, here's a tidbit for you. I strongly encourage you to stop your tag-along after Heinz slandering and libel of Shirley Ricard. It is blatantly obvious that you have not listened to her previous presentations to this forum. And here's something that you and Adalita, be a huge newsflash for you. You've been played the fool by your chairperson, as has Samuel Brown, for believing her lies that Shirley ever pointedly called Matt Heinz a pedophile. If your chairperson had admitted to you that she had made a private declaration to Shirley that Shirley would not be allowed to exercise her First Amendment right to free speech under the Constitution of these United States, you would know why Shirley spoke that precise word three times in succession during her last presentation to the Board. The sign, that's this one, that Shirley displayed, I'm not even sure if anyone can see it, was not of that word, but a phrase related to the fact that Matt Heinz was a coward for not facing his constituents. He would rather watch the proceedings from his laptop, sitting in the back room, eating bagels, drinking Pepsi, and stating that he, quote, "doesn't have to face those idiots", end quote. His opinion of them might be of great interest to his constituents, one would think. Mr. Scott, I task you to ask your chairperson to see how she responds. Will she tell you the truth about her actions and what she said to Shirley? She has taken all of you down a path of which she and consequently you will suffer serious repris... Yes. And you are just her collateral damage. I would be most wise, it would be most wise to consider your next move very carefully, Mr. Scott. I'm sure you will find that Shirley will gladly and humbly accept your abject apology for your slanderous words and for your heartfelt retraction that you will be required to pen reflecting as much. You've been led astray by your comrades. Thank you.
Reverend Tracy Howe?
Good morning, Supervisors. I'm Reverend Tracy Howe. I work for Justice in Local Church Ministries at the national setting of the United Church of Christ. I reside here in Tucson and live in District Five. I'm accompanied by a couple of my colleagues this morning, Reverend Bart Smith from St. Mark's Presbyterian and Jewish Faith Worker Molly Block from Coenette Rising. We're three of the 17 clergy and religious leaders that sent a letter to you in December voicing urgent concern over the deaths occurring in the Pima County jail. We were disappointed to not receive any communication back from you. We continue to remain concerned over the death and violence occurring within state supervision, that is state-sanctioned violence. We've been continuing to meet. We've been continuing to listen to the families of loved ones who have died and listen to those organizing in solidarity with them. This is Holy Week, a time when many Christians are preparing for Easter and recognition of the death and resurrection of Jesus. It is also a season leading up to Passover for our Jewish siblings and it is a season for many people of faith where we continue reflections on how to embody love and cultivate justice in our common home. What we've done is, over the past number of weeks, is actually written the prayers and concerns of the families of loved ones who have died in the Pima County jail and into our own liturgies and I would like to share some of that with you this morning. An adaptation of Psalm 10. "Why, people of faith, do you stand far off? Why do you hide yourselves in times of trouble? Those claiming to serve and protect are criminalizing the poor. Let all be freed from the schemes they have upheld, for the state failed to provide care and people keep dying. We are here, we care, and we will remember." Yunan Mohammed Al Tibutu, Jose Flores. "We are here, we care, and we will remember." Pedro Xavier Martinez Palacios, Silvestre Miguel Indunza, Alex Romo, Jonathan James Leary, Wade William Welch. "We are here, we care, we will remember." Terrence Salazar, Benjamin Wilhite, Hugh Gillespie Burford, Amin Shaheed Muhammad Ali. "We are here, we care, we will remember." Jesús Aguilar Vigeroa, Norberto Medican Beltran, Justin Crook, Jack Dixon, Weldon Ellis. "We are here, we care, we will remember." Cruz Junior Patino, Zachariah Farrington, Sandra Judson, Jacob Miranda, William Omegar. These are the names of folks who have died in just the past two years. "Come closer, oh, people of faith, do not forget the dying. You see divine thread who weaves all, and so do those of us who know we are all bound in life together." We will continue to work in solidarity and our letter was not just a condemnation, but offered actionable items to prevent and stop the death in the Pima County jail. We hope that you will... We hope that you will consider further attention to these important matters.
Kay Lombard?
Thank you.
Chisela Aaron and Roger Score.
Good morning, Chairman Grohalva. My name is Kay Lombard. I am a newly retired RN and US Air Force veteran. I started nursing school in 1976, so you guys can do the math. In 2007, I received a Congressional Certificate of Honor because, and I was also selected as Tucson Fabulous 50 Nurses because of my public service work that I started in 1995 with the Pima County Attorney's Office. And I've worked with public servants, starting with Jim Colby, Janet Napolitano, when she was Governor Safety, Highway Safety, and then she recruited me for Homeland Security Health Affairs. Also worked with Dr. Richard Carmonia as General Surgeon, Mayor Walker, and of course, Gabby Giffords. I trained doctors, nurses, medics, police, fire, Border Patrol, Homeland Security, all from all over the world. At University Medical Center at the time, ER trauma was pretty much the number one in the nation. Training medical professionals was my forte. I nurtured and I led baby doctors in their first life or death experience and helped them take the lead. I earned my favorite nickname, Trauma Mama. I was day shift nurse in the era at UMC Tucson ER Trauma with my fellow nurses who I consider legends, Susan Kincaid and Susan Ferguson, may they both rest in peace, Vicki, Robin, and Carol. Every year at the end of the residential year, we would vote as charge nurses, who was our favorite resident, who was our least favorite resident. Then came Matt Heinz. We endured Matt Heinz residency, and in my opinion, my opinion of him was so strong, I am afraid of what I'm going to say, because he made my skin crawl. I'm confident Matt and his ego won't remember me, so I'm just going to tell you a couple of things that I remember about him in my personal opinion. Number one, he was heartless. Number two, most despised and hostile. Number three, most disrespected, most disrespectful. Number four, most egotistical, Harvard fellowship, you know. Number five, inappropriate professional behavior, very childlike. Number six, unapproachable, unteachable. Number seven, will never, ever, ever be called doctor by me. Matt Heinz's behavior is unbecoming not only of just a doctor, but as a Pima County Support of Supervisors. I'm ashamed to be right here speaking in this regard about him, because he is repeatedly manifesting a pattern of behavior that has worsened since he was a baby resident. His January Zoom call where Matt Heinz's travel companion appeared in his Speedo, obviously flaunting his ass.
Your time has expired. Thank you. Chisela Aaron? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Have a seat, please.
Good morning. My name is Chisela Aaron, and I live in Reedah Ranch. During your last supervisor meetings, you denied a US citizen her right to free speech and banned her. You then proceeded to trample on our inherent rights of free speech. You have violated the First Amendment, and you abridged our freedom of speech and the right of the people to peaceably assemble and to petition government for redress of grievances. Here are my grievances now. When you changed the public agenda, you moved public calm and last, you violated public meeting law posting 24 hours ahead, the agenda. By agreeing with Grichalva, her Soviet-style censorship, you have locked the public out from any input in county decisions, just like you locked out Shirley. She's out there now, once again. This is the third time she's locked out. Communists do that. In America, we have the rule of law. We have the Constitution, and I gave you that before. I need to correct you by necessity. I, one of the people, as seen in Article 2, Section 2, will instruct you on the common law and the US Constitution. Please take notice that by taking your oath of office, you have entered into contract with the people. You have agreed to become the people's servants, and you are bound to serve the people's trust and ensure a contract. We, the people, have a duty to, an obligation to preserve the blessings of liberty and of good government. Here's your notarized oath. You violated it. This is Matt Heinz. This is your oath. Here's the US Constitution. Read it. Never abridge the people's right again. We shall serve you with notice by affidavit for unlawfully trespassing on the inherent rights of the people. I'm hereby serving you on abridgement of freedom of right. Secondly, elected officials should at least be held to the same standards as Pima County employees regarding common courtesy and not causing any embarrassing embarrassment to the county. According to the Board of Supervisors' policy manual, the policy manual is an extension of the rule of law. According to the county policies, only elected officials and authorized staff shall be privy to the county's executive session. And you have not made sure that there's nobody in the room with him. How do you know this hasn't happened every time? So you put our business, the people's business, at risk that somebody could have overheard every time he was on Zoom. He could be on call, behind the curtain, in the cubicle, in the hospital.
Your time has expired. Thank you. Your time has expired. Roger Score? And the next three speakers are Stephanie Kirk, Paul McCreary, and Rachel Jane S. Thank you. Ma'am, you could give that to the clerk. Go ahead, Mr. Score.
You didn't want one? Board Chairman Grohalva, I'm here today to ask you, I saw you had a moment of silence before for a staff from Pima County. Do any of you remember or know what happened on April 4th, 1968? A very famous man was assassinated in Memphis, Tennessee on this day. But the devout Democrats you are, you don't even know the day Martin Luther King was assassinated? You give no recognition to the man? That's pretty sickening. I want to remind people in this room that you're not stupid. These people are not stupid. Stupid people deserve sympathy. This is pure evilness. This is evil. This is like out of a bad Batman movie. We heard how 70,000 had Parkinson's, while over 100,000 died in Pima County from fentanyl. But yet you don't discuss curing this. Like, why not an attack against a fentanyl? I don't hear you discussing that 84.6% of the homeless youth have been sex trafficked at one time when interviewed. Where's the discussions on placing money to protect our youth, to protect our citizens? This is pure evilness. You can look away, Sharon, but you can't deny it's the truth. Yeah, I sneeze at that every time I hear it. If Japan was to invade the United States today, it wouldn't bomb Pearl Harbor, it'd go to Mexico. You guys would welcome them up, provide housing for them, feed them, then elect them to Congress. So I know there's a lot of problems the Democrats are trying to solve, but every Democrat in the legislature voted to not end tax on food for home consumption. That's a direct attack against the poor. You want to call this Children's Week? The Democrats and Katie Hobbs voted to block a bill that would make it mandatory for a doctor to save a baby once it's born after he failed to kill it. How about that child?
Thank you for your question. Stephanie Kirk?
Welcome. Matt, my name is Stephanie Kirk. I want to state that this is the third time that Ms. Shirley has been denied entrance, and that I believe that Supervisor Christie would like to have Thomas Dinkler's letter read on the opinion, and I want to make sure that my voice is being heard, that if someone can say the name pedophile and be excluded from the call to the public, but they can chain themselves and say all the other words at TUSD and be allowed in and praised by the same very person that's excluding that person, then we have problems. We have big problems. I am here to state that we will not be doing a private session. I am sick and tired of you running to the back, Adalita, every time you don't get your way. Nicholas Copernicus published the heliocentric model in 1543. He proposed that the idea that the earth was stationary, that the sun was stationary, that the earth revolved around the sun. While the theory had inaccuracies, it was later supported by Galileo, Isaac Newton, and maybe even you. But not before people were burned at the stake and placed on house arrest for thinking differently, kind of like how we're being silenced here, Adalita. Thank you Supervisor Christie for the Pima County opinion on how this board continues to silence the public while reflecting poor leadership. In a world full of Copernicus, or in a world full of followers, be a Copernicus and think outside the box. And I don't mean the black box warning, which reflects the FDA's strictest and most serious warning given to the medications. The FDA gave Pfizer, Moderna a heart risk label while labeling J&amp;J stroke-induced chances for 65 and up. That's a great way to get rid of, I don't know, Social Security with the baby boomers, don't you think? Couldn't kill them off. At a time that China and Russia are joining arms, we are disadvantaging our soldiers and our military. Makes me sick. Increased injuries can be reflected when the CDC requested more funds to hire additional employees to track the injuries in VAERS, which is a passive and underused vaccine injury reporting system. I will later prove that. Not one jab has been proven to stop or prevent, nor have they been proven safe or effective. But J&amp;J and System Unity lasts for six months, but you may get your second booster two months right after you got your first one, and you can mix and match, no big deal. It doesn't make any sense to me. It feels like we're living in a geocentric period where the earth, it feels like we're living during the geocentric period, heliocentric period, when the center of the universe, I don't even know what I was saying here, but it feels like we're living back in the day when we're being silenced. If we can't speak, and we can't come into this board and say what we want to say, would it all make sense? Because if a woman was raised by a father who believes in socialism, then you are going to do the job to hand out our tax money to all of the groups that you put up on a pedestal and state that they are under-
Your time has expired. Paul McCreary? Rachel Jones? Oh, I'm sorry. Then Rachel Jones, followed by Terry Burkholdt. Thank you. No, no, you're fine. I was just calling the other speakers after you. Thank you.
I'd like to talk to you today about maxims of law, which is, maxims of law have their basis in God's law, which are likewise fundamental and immutable. Not only are they on par with God's law, but also on par with our Constitution and the Bill of Rights. The word maxim is defined as an absolute truth or principle. Maxims are considered to be infallible. Emergency backup system when all else fails, so to speak. Every wrongdoing against either the temporal or the spiritual property of another is a trespass. That's you, Adalita. The law of God and the natural law of the land are one and the same. The law of God cannot be affected and is everlasting. Tyranny begins where law ends. The right cannot be converted into a crime. No person can be charged for exercising one of their rights afforded by the Constitution's, and no man has the right to trespass against the equal rights of another person. Adalita? Statutes are not law. Indeed, they are far beneath the law. Maxims, again, are on par with the Constitution. No statute acts as a law if it violates or waver a fundamental right in order to comply with the demands of either something called the state or with any part of government. The government is the servant of the man. Its first duty is to protect we, the people, and property of we, the people. We, the people, are sovereign. Stop them at the border. Protect us. To deny or trespass on a right of another person is an act of war, a tort. You have done this to Shirley Regard. Adalita Grohalva, Rex Scott, Matt Heinz, and Sharon Bronson, I'm glad you're on the right. You're getting there. Stay with him. Members of Pima County Supervisors Board, and that's in parentheses, I take you out of your position. You are in violation of maxims against we, the people of Pima County, Arizona, by your actions and all of the above mentioned are formally charged with maladministration in public office, which is a tort crime. A tort is an act of war. Neither badges symbols nor uniforms grant extra rights nor reduce the rights of we, the people, nor do they protect a wrongdoer from liability for harming another person. Your actions have caused such harm to not only Shirley Regard, but also to the citizens of Pima County. No man is above the law.
Rachel Jones?
Hi. My name is Rachel Jones, and I live in District 3. I'm a former employee and current volunteer at Pima Animal Care Center. In my current profession, I travel to other animal shelters and rescues across the country to assist with their lifesaving programs. I'm sure you're aware by now, but animal shelters and rescues, both in Pima County and across the country, are experiencing an overpopulation crisis, and that is not an understatement. There was a time in the past, you probably remember here, when euthanizing healthy animals en masse for space was just a part of the job, but it was operating under those conditions with supportive leadership like yours and supportive communities like Pima County that Pima Animal Care became one of, if not the, most successful municipal shelter in the country. PAC went from euthanizing 40% of its dogs just 10 years ago to less than 10% today. A new norm has been established for our homeless pets, and turning back the clock to the dark ages when we would euthanize our way out of a problem is not on the table anymore. We know our pets deserve better and that we can do better, and we know Pima County residents care about this. We've seen our dog adoption rate go from 58% of our outcomes in 2021 to 66% of our outcomes in 2022. In the history of PAC, the adoption rate had never previously breached 60%. In spite of this, PAC is still operating over capacity every single day, even while doing everything right. A PAC shelter means contagious deadly illnesses spread like wildfire. A few hours after I wrote this, actually, it was announced that two dogs tested positives for strep Z yesterday, which is two outbreaks in less than six months. This is previously an illness that would surface every few years at the shelter. An over-PAC shelter also means dog deteriorate rapidly with limited opportunities to leave their cramped, noisy kennels, and it means staff and volunteer turnover is very high because working in an environment like this and feeling hopeless as you watch animals you love lose more and more of themselves, if not their lives, day after day, is nothing short of trauma on a grand scale for pay that doesn't compete. The community desperately wants to help these animals, but they can only do so much in times like these when they can barely afford rent. I believe we're at a tipping point in animal sheltering where we either lose years' worth of lifesaving progress or we take some bigger next steps. of life-saving progress or we take some bigger next steps. There are many different arenas we could look to for solutions, as this crisis is multifaceted, but as county leadership, I would defer to you to know what is most feasible and what may already be underway. I imagine solutions in at least three broad categories, the first of which being making it less of a burden to own dogs by way of things like tax credits for landlords who allow pets or regularly discriminated against breeds, incentivized and more widely accessible spay neuter. The second category being making it more difficult for puppy mills and backyard breeders to produce and sell dogs by way of limiting storefront sales of dogs to shelter and rescue groups or introducing higher standards and tighter regulations for breeders. As I understand it, there are currently no standards or regulations for breeders in Arizona. The third would be making shelter work more competitive so we stop losing excellent staff to far less stressful work. For the pay frontline staff, they could easily just get a job at Costco and be able to sleep at night.
Did you want to submit your written comments and whatever documentation, and then it'll be shared with the rest of us? Thank you so much. Teri Burkholdt, and then followed by Tiffany, I'm sorry. Butchirelli Fay, thank you. Dave Smith and Susan Kelly.
Good morning. I'm Teri Burkholdt, and I have lived in the surrounding, I'm sorry. I'm Teri Burkholdt, and I've lived in the surrounding areas of Tucson for 67 years. I'm a registered pharmacist of 45 years. And I am here to speak about my best friend Shirley Recard of 22 years. And I understand now that I am not alone as a resident of Green Valley who is not satisfied in taking a board member's singular word as to the young man's age who walked into the screen of an official Zoom meeting. This entire board will continue to be the laughing stock of radio talk shows throughout Tucson and Phoenix until valid proof is shared and documented. Those of you who are members of the board, and this includes the board attorney, Sam Brown, should be seriously reconsidering your commitment to the board position for not demanding the production of the alleged evidence and not just assuming that a board member's word would suffice as gospel truth. Only when a person has a personal say and representation in their government is the concept of taxation with representation withheld. The very reason for the Boston Tea Party was that, that exclusive issue. So, when anyone desires to direct or halt the comments, views, and opinions of the people, it should be considered an outrage into our, to our very liberty, since this board's job would have been delegated into legislation without representation. It's total and complete tyranny. A people, in reality, the job of every member of this board is to remain open to the people at all times and in all things.
Right.
Shame on the board chair for suggesting that the people who elected you should be prohibited from speaking their mind on any subject. It is their right, given to them by the First Amendment of the Constitution. Perhaps it would be wise to reall, to read the Constitution that was just passed out to you all. It is undoubtedly, it will undoubtedly be referred to in the future. I would be very, very careful, board, in an effort to, in an effort to shut us down, to shut us down. Remember, you serve our pleasure. Stop your tyrannical rants and immature outbursts. It's quite unbecoming of you of your age, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Tiffany?
Page 21 in your-
Good morning, Pima County Supervisors. My name is Tiffany Butchirelli Fay, and I'm the Director of Early Childhood, Early Education in, at the Amphi School District. We are here today to thank you for recognizing the importance of early childhood education in Pima County. As you are aware, in the proclamation of today, you are representing the young child. With your generous support through PIPs funding, we have opened nine additional preschools serving children ages three through five in our community. This has allowed us to offer high-quality preschools to more than 275 of our youngest Amphi learners. With your continued support, we will be expanding yet again to support more families in our community who are in need of high-quality, free preschool education. We will be expanding to open preschool rooms at Ironwood Ridge High School, Coronado K-8, Wilson K-8, and Mesa Verde. Here are some fun facts about preschool in the Amphi School District so far this year. This year, we have 12 sites with a total of 14 classrooms. We have 275 students who enrolled in preschool with us. We have 40 high school early childhood education interns that are paid. We also have two student teachers from the University of Arizona in the department, five alumni from the high school early childhood education CTE program who have now returned in our teaching in the program. We have 10 schools with three or four star ranked with quality first. Our preschoolers won first and second place in SARSEF, which is the Regional Science and Engineering Competition. Six sites are finalizing the self-study and NEPA accreditation, and our preschool at CDO High School recently opened a STEM room for early childhood education. With your continued support, in the coming year, we will be serving over 500 children in a high-quality preschool. So, we want to thank you so much for supporting our youngest learners in our community and preparing them for lifelong learning.
Thank you. Dave Smith, and that's Susan Kelly, Denise Garland, and Ann Rose are after. Thank you.
Well, good morning, Board of Supervisors. I'm Dave Smith, Chairman of the Republican Party here in Pima County. You know, that's the seal of Pima County, not the United Nations back there. Maybe you started serving the people of this county instead of worrying about everybody else from now the rest of the world. We formed governments for our general welfare, not for welfare only, but general welfare. How about life, liberty, and the pursuit of property? Actually, it was the original sentence. You think our property is just to be given up willy-nilly. Look at these expenditures. You know, when I was with DPS, you know, before I would ever submit for some, let's say we wanted to change to a new weapon, you know, I had to show there'd be a feedback loop in there to show that that was an effective change for our, for our department, that we had effectively expended those funds for a positive result. If not, if that cybernetic or feedback loop was not effective, then those programs were ended. There's no program you've ever passed that you don't love. Is it a kickback system to the Democrat Party? What the hell is this about? What's your feedback? What's your cybernetic loop? There isn't one. You just give away the money of the people and at the same time, for the benefit of people everywhere in the world but here, our roads, our schools, our, our security, our safety. The Sheriff's Department needs funds. Why don't we have a deputy or at least a retired law enforcement officer or veteran in every school in this, this county? Why is that, babe? And it's not my fault you're being harassed. You created me. I didn't, I didn't, you frustrate me, you make me mad, you make us all mad, and that's how come I got elected. Dave Smith is not your problem. The people of Pima County are your problem, and we're done. And you know, Dr. Hubris, you continue to embarrass yourself on the radio when you open your mouth. I have no doubt you're a philosopher king and wiser than all of us, but those of us bronze old people, as you may have read in your Plato years ago, we're actually Aristotelians. We believe in science. We believe in the rule of law, and we're coming after you. I'm gonna get, I am going to run people against you. I'm gonna expend a lot of funds against you. I guarantee you, as a Republican Party Chairman, I'm committed to have people who represent the people of Pima County, because I want you to have to debate your ideas. I want you to tell me, what is your vision, vision for the future? This business of this, this city, 15-minute city, that's totalitarian. You can't live that way. And even scientists, evolutionary psychologists, say it's absurd on its face. So, I'm gonna keep presenting science to you, but I'm challenging you, the Republican Party is here alive and well. Thank you, and thank you, Steve Christie.
Thank you. Susan Kelly, thank you. Thank, thank you. Go ahead, hit the mics on.
I am in Ms. Bronson's district, District Three. I am so disappointed that Matt Hines has left because I wanted to share some knowledge with him over what I have learned across my more than 30 years of leadership service to this country. First, I want to remind you all to think about tonight, when you go home and you're thinking about Dave's speech and all the people's speech here. Why did you run for this office? Was it just the power? Because power is very enticing. I know this, but I've worked with lots of really bad leaders that really did it for the power. Being a leader is so hard. Being an elected leader is even harder. But I will share that as a team leader, when one person demonstrates unprofessional behavior, and in this case, two or three people, the entire team suffers. In this case, the whole team is Pima County, all of us. The dynamic of the team is destroyed, and they spend a lot of energy just talking about the people that have offended and not accomplishing anything. I don't see you accomplishing anything except spending money. The times when, the times when these issues have happened and management did not address the behavior issues, the team performance continues to degrade even more. However, when management did address the issue, the team was able to refocus after a bit and eventually recover. I see that our Pima County Board of Supervisors and Leadership is ignoring the behavioral issues of Matt Hines and Adalita Grahalva. You need to address this, and the sooner the better. If you don't publicly state your case like we have, we assume that you side with him. And thank God for Steve Christie for publicly stating his opinion. It's done. We're not gonna let this go. I'm gonna be up here every other week talking to you all about leadership and professionalism. Most humans need to save face when we make mistakes. Later on, at a restaurant, I can tell you a really great story about some Japanese customers that needed to save face. Unfortunately, Matt and Adalita have never apologized for your mistakes. I wish I had a suggestion for you both, but for sure, a real apology would go a long way. And my last statement is, you need to let Shirley come back in. Adalita, that is the mistake you've made recently. We are all very angered by this, and we're not gonna go away. If you want us to behave professionally, and I believe I'm always professional when I'm up here, you need to admit your mistakes. Believe me, I've made hundreds of mistakes, but I hope that the people that have been on my teams would willingly, openly admit that I have apologized when I've made those mistakes.
Thank you. Denise Garland? Is Ann Rose here? Okay, great. And then, I'm sorry, just quickly. Bilad Rees, and then DeWalt Dare, and that would be our last speaker. Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning, Supervisors. Everybody take a deep breath. Okay. I'm Denise Garland, and I'm with the Gates Pass Area Neighborhood Association over on the west side. Established in 1987, I represent about 200 members from that area. Our Board of Directors' mission is in, to act in the interest of our members on issues such as limiting commercial development, reducing crime and litter, retaining overall environmental quality of our area. So, today, and actually, in 19, or, sorry, in 2021, there was an illegal trail cut into the desert next to Kenny Road between Howe Grass Road and Tucson Mountain Park Rifle and Pistol Range. Due to the community outcry in 2022, when it was discovered, the community was not happy about it, the trail is now going through proper process to determine if it will be accepted into the trail system, what change, or if some changes need to be made. The incident made me think about how trails are planned, approved, and developed in Pima County. So, I asked a lot of questions. You have some great staff, and they did get back to me. Today, I'm here to ask that you please support our natural environment by directing staff to evaluate and update the Pima County Regional Trails System Master Plan. I have to admit, I didn't know about that till your staff shared that with me. I've looked through it. The master plan has not been revised since 2015, and I'm asking that representatives from major stakeholder groups be included in this update as, and included in future oversight of planned and developed trails. So, you have that community input. Only a few Pima County staff who are experts in conservation and recreation currently work on trail planning and development. While I know Pima County resources are stretched thin, I believe the community is willing to help manage trails that they recreate on. Involving a volunteer or stakeholders from groups like hiking, biking, horseback riding, birding, photography, conservation, biologist community would help make, would help make an updated plan richer with valuable insight and knowledge. Involving these groups also would create transparency to the process, which helps increase community trust and confidence in decisions being made by Pima County leaders. Thank you so much. May I provide my comments for the board? A copy of the comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
God bless the beasts and the children. Some thoughts that crossed my mind this morning, just random thoughts. Corruption, communism, drug addiction, digital prisons, the loss of freedom of speech. I tip my nurse's cap to you, Shirley Recard. Pedophilia, and the grooming sexualization of young children. Random thoughts today. This is the week of the young child and early childhood education. I recall, it was a little over a year ago, or maybe two now, during COVID, that the American Academy of Pediatrics changed two key developmental milestones for the young ones, for the little ones, and it was from the masking. So, just beware of masking the little ones, not to mention the rest of us. But today, the news is reporting on coarse particulate matter in the air from all the wind, so it's an appropriate thing to put the mask on today, ironically. The Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Now, I'll tell you, if we keep grooming young children to question whether they're boys or girls, you know, a child is sexually abused every nine minutes? We can expect that rate to go up if this grooming continues? If you have grandchildren or young children yourself, this should be like something you think about. I live in District Three, Sharon Bronson, Supervisor. I would like a Public Health hearing at the Board of Health. It was promised last year in September. It was bumped. We weren't on the agenda. For some reason, it was bumped October. Didn't happen in October either. We filled the public comment period that month. We still want that. Thank you. And last but not least, about Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month, I recall my father had it, but maybe the health department can consider iboglatyone? Iboglatyone reduces the symptoms of Parkinson's. It's temporary, but it would be a nice project, a nice study, just to explore it, since we're putting a focus on that. Hallelujah.
Thank you. Bilad Rees? Our last speaker is DeWalt Dare.
Good morning. Everybody has spoke so eloquently. I feel very inept following all these wonderful speakers. I have tons of stuff I want to share on, and three minutes is never enough. You know, so I get a feeling that you guys don't like all the people coming to the audience and calling you out, and one sure way to stop that would be to really just admit that you were wrong, say you're sorry, and change your behavior, and remember that you serve the people. And, God, I hope I get time to say everything, but you know, Rex Scott, you're new to the board, and Mr. Brown, you're new to the board. and Mr. Brown, you're new to the board, or whatever your job is. The reality is that you need to step outside from the people that you follow and be independent thinkers because the chair has led a lot of people astray, and a lot of bad things have happened with nepotism, conflict of interest, do what I say, whatever. It won't work out well for you. Thank you, Sharon Bronson, for coming around. And I am a Democrat in District 2. It's not about Democrat Republic. It's about doing the right thing for the people. And, you know, I spoke last time about, you know, okay, so I'm going to say this is my hypothetical opinion, just to keep myself legal here. But there have been lots of conflicts of interest, lots of nepotism. You guys, I hope you know that behind your back, I'm sure that the Democratic Party is looking to replace you. It will happen because you're an embarrassment to Adalita, even though she brought you on. But she won't tell you that. So, there's chess. You guys play chess. You play chess. The Garhova machine plays chess with people. They know who they want to put in what seat. And some constables were appointed here recently. Background checks need to be done on anybody that you appoint, period, for any position. You need to, you know, have some balances, not just my friend recommended and my friend, and I'm going to move you in. It happens to be that there's somebody that works for Pima County who was appointed. Their cousin happens to now be an appointed constable in Pima County. I'm going to run out of time. Okay, so anyways, you all know some people died as a direct result of somebody saying, "Appoint my friend, appoint my friend, appoint my friend. This position will move, this position will move." It's sickening. I can't talk in the amount of time because this is so distraught. But don't be surprised if somebody with the initials KR from the Green Valley area ends up running for one of these positions or tries to get appointed somewhere because she's friends with somebody who started the whole nonsense with Deborah Martinez-Gerbe. You need to appoint people who are qualified, not your friends, not your friend of somebody, not somebody who promises to-
DeWolde Dare?
First of all, I'm not going to play games with the propaganda props. We can have them back. We're over that prop garbage. So, here we are. You want to go in the back and put your little, like, hizzy fits? You got your time? Go ahead. If not, I'm not here to address you. I'm actually here to address the people of this town because I'm mad. I'm not even mad at you because you don't care about what I say or what they say. You don't care because you think that we're a joke. And they think that they pay your paychecks. They don't pay your paychecks. The cartel pays your paychecks, okay? Well, here's the other people that I want to address today. First and second, right there, the man with the uniform. Either you are a sheriff, a constitutional sheriff, or you're a man wearing a costume for Halloween, okay? You're supposed to protect our rights. The First Amendment, you're not doing anything about it. And what you guys have to do is call his supervisor to enforce it. As of right now, she keeps pushing the button to silence us. You're not doing anything about it. So, you got to hire a cop from a mall because that's what he is right now. He's not here to protect us. That woman's outside, and she's being prevented for exercising her constitutional protective right, her First Amendment, and he's not doing anything about it. That's his job, to protect us, not just you, because then that would be a security guard. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. That's the end of the call to the audience. And so, I'll ask if any of my colleagues wish to respond to a criticism, wish to ask staff to review a matter, or ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. Okay, thank you. And so, next on the agenda is Executive Session. We have two items, one on the agenda and one on the addendum. I'll go ahead and ask from, I'll go ahead and move to go into a second. I'll call on you. Motion in a second by Supervisor Bronson. Supervisor Christie?
Madam Chair, we're down to two executive items. I ask that they be voted upon to enter into Executive Session singly.
Did you want to change?
Just to substitute motion.
I would like then to propose a substitute motion that we go into Executive Session on number nine on the regular agenda, and that we do not go into Executive Session on the addendum Executive Session item of number one.
Okay, so we're not voting on them separately. You're just doing nine and one. Nine, yes, and one, no. Right? Okay, understood. All right, so are you moving that?
I'm moving that.
Okay.
I'll second on item nine.
Well, he's moving it as a package, going into nine and not on one.
Okay, yep. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. I'll have a roll call vote, please. Supervisor Bronson?
Yes.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Hines?
No.
Supervisor Scott?
Can I see item nine again? Or my screen went off?
The conflict, and then one is the other. Otherwise, we're going to move them both together.
Come on, Rex.
Thank you.
All right. Yes.
Okay.
And Chair Garhova, if I may?
Yeah, Supervisor-
The reason I'm saying yes is that Mr. Brown told us last meeting that we could talk about these items either in, we could talk about them both in public and in private.
Okay.
Correct, Mr. Brown?
Chair, you have, Supervisor Scott, that's correct.
Thank you.
Chair Garhova, your vote? No. So, the item passes 3-2, so we'll go in Exec for item nine, and then we'll come back out. Thank you.
Go in Exec. Can we take a brief?
Absolutely. Yes, we'll take a break after. Absolutely. Yep, thanks.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Returning from executive session. Note that all board members are present. So item nine was pursuant to ARS 38431.03A, three and four. Legal advice direction regarding Russin Lopez and Lizardi. Request for conflict of interest waiver. That was a discussion item. And then on item 16, so we'll go to 16. It is on page, my page seven. We're going to vote. And I'll go ahead and move that we accept the conflict of interest.
Or no, waive conflict.
Wave conflict of interest.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed, item passes unanimously. So now we're on the consent agenda. I will go ahead.
Madam Chair, this is a point of order. We don't want to take what was going to be on executive session at this time? Or should we wait till we get to the point?
No, I think we're just gonna go ahead and wait until the item comes up.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, sure. So on the consent agenda, I'll go ahead and move the item except for item one.
I'll second.
A motion, a second. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed, item passes unanimously. Now we're back on one. And this was the Pima County Fair Horse Racing Commission. The appointment of Joanne DiFilippo and reappointment of Robert Hartman.
I'm gonna move appointment of both.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I don't want to jeopardize my appointment.
Well, I'm moving both.
I'll second.
Okay, but motion and a second. Any discussion?
Chair Gruh, supervisor Scott. All board members received a communication from Dr. Ed Ackerly, the head of Rito Racing. I think that was the communication that Mr. Brown was referring to. And it was requested that we table these items until the issues that were raised in the letter could be addressed by the county attorney's office. And I wonder, since we're moving on these items now, if Mr. Brown is prepared to discuss some of the points that Dr. Ackerly raised in his letter to us.
I want to point out, Madam Chair, that Dr. DiFilippo, given the points, well, and I think you also received, Supervisor Scott, a letter from your appointee.
I did, yes ma'am.
And I want to point out that while Dr. DiFilippo is a racehorse owner, she receives no remuneration from Pima County for horse racing. And I, again, in the past years, a number of racehorse owners, including John Goodman, Bert Knurk, Steve Brody, Bill Matthews, have owned racehorses at Rito as well and served as members of the Pima County Fair Race Commission. So I am perplexed. I read Ackerly's letter, I read your appointee's letter, and I think we should move forward with their appointments.
And Chair Gruh, if I may, I'm not opposed to the appointment of either Dr. DiFilippo or Mr. Hartman. I am just concerned when our legal counsel says that there were issues that were raised by Dr. Ackerly that should be addressed before we consider the appointments. So that's the only point that I am making.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and ask for a roll call. Did you want to respond?
Madam Chair, if I could.
Supervisor Christie.
The issue is not with my reappointment of Robert Hartman. So I'm concerned that if we're putting them together and it's voted up or down, it would include him.
Understood. You wanted to step back.
Actually, it is Supervisor Christie. Dr. Ackerly asked us to consider tabling both appointments.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
And that was the issue that I wanted our counsel to address.
Okay, Mr. Brown.
Chair Gruh, supervisor Bronson, supervisor Scott. So our recommendation was that it would be prudent to look into some of the issues raised in the communication.
Specify issues.
Without issues regarding conflicts of interest, issues regarding what are the criteria that determine a conflict of interest for board commissions and board committees? It is correct that the board can make these appointments and we can look into these issues, or we can look into these issues and then make the appointments. It is more difficult to undo an appointment, and this is the only reason we made a recommendation to look into the issues first, because this is a recurring issue. This isn't the first time this has come up.
Well, and it's a recurring issue on all, I'm sorry, pardon me, Madam Chair. It's an issue on all boards, commissions, and committees. So I think perhaps what would be prudent at this point is to approve these appointees. I do not feel they have conflicts. And you already have indicated to me that my appointee did not have a conflict. But what would be helpful for us is if you could issue an opinion on what is a conflict, not necessarily today, but in the future as we make new appointments. So that would be very, very helpful.
County Administrator Lesher, do we have, when we go through this process and appointees are approved or submit applications, do they sign a waiver? Do we have any sort of acknowledgement that if an issue comes up during their service on a specific board, that they should recuse themselves? Or do we go through that process?
Sure, at this point, when an individual is appointed to a boards and committee and commission, they then sign paperwork with the clerk that includes a review of the open meeting law as well as conflict of interest. We are currently working with, under the direction of the clerk, to establish some additional materials with that because this issue has come up. So that then individuals will not only sign the affidavit, but will sign that they declare they do not have a conflict on that board and fully delineate the process in case a conflict might come up at some point during their service.
Yeah, I would feel more comfortable waiting until the 18th. I understand that this is an appointment that you brought forward with different individuals, but I mean, I don't know that two weeks will make a big difference in this issue. And so I would feel more comfortable waiting, but we do have a motion and a second, so I can do a roll call.
Let's do a roll call vote.
Sure, okay. Anyone else have any questions? Supervisor Christie.
Again, I'm looking at the letter that Supervisor Scott's referring to from Mr. Ackerly, and I see no reference at all to my appointment, and yet he's being tied into this whole issue.
It was, I'm sorry Supervisor Christie, it wasn't in the letter, it was in the email that Dr. Ackerly sent. And the additional confusion for me is that in the email that my appointee sent to me that Supervisor Bronson referenced earlier, he raised questions about potential conflicts of interest of your appointee. And I'm just, I'm frustrated with these claims that are being made by people who are on the commission, by people who are outside the commission. And I would like to know how we are supposed to proceed as a board. And I understand Supervisor Bronson's frustration when she was told that there was no conflict for Dr. DiFilippo, and now you have somebody else who's involved with the racing industry saying, "Well, hold off because we think there might be conflicts for both of these." It's a very muddled situation when you're trying to decide how to vote.
Chair Gruh.
Supervisor Heinz.
And this might be better for, I guess, for Administrator Lesher. Will there be any negative impact whatsoever with regard to the function of the board we're discussing if we were to simply continue this until the next meeting? Would there be a problem not having these appointments made right now?
Chair Gruh, supervisor Heinz, I'm gonna look to Carmine to firm this for me. I'm sorry, Deputy County Administrator. I believe that last weekend was the last racing day and that the season for racing at Rito has ended. Therefore, I don't believe that the Fair Horse Racing Commission will be convened and asked to opine on dates since that season is over.
Actually, they are convening.
Go ahead. Mr. DeBonus, and then I'll turn it over to you Supervisor Bronson.
So Madam Chair and Ms. Lesher, board members, the racing season has concluded. There are no urgent items of action for the Fair Racing Commission, so if they have a quorum, they could meet on whatever other standard business that they have. But there's nothing urgent pending, I believe, that would be affected if this item is continued.
Continue till April 18th. Thank you Supervisor Bronson.
Madam Chair, I disagree. I think there are some items, they're selecting chair and that sort of thing. So I think it's imperative that we have everybody sitting there.
Okay, all right. So I'll go ahead and ask for a roll call vote, and if this item doesn't pass, then I'll ask that it be dropped back on the 18th.
Before we do the roll call vote.
Supervisor Scott.
Out of respect for the wishes of my colleagues who want to move forward with their appointees, I'm going to approve these appointments, but I would like to ask, I hope maybe he was intending to already for Mr. Brown to respond in writing to the concerns that were raised by Dr. Ackerly so that the board can get that response. And I'm also going to forward to you the email that Supervisor Bronson referred to from my appointee where he raised another potential concern of conflict, if you could also address that.
Yeah, I guess my concern is we move forward, if something comes up in the next two weeks, undoing this is a lot more difficult than voting. So that's fine, I mean, it's the will of the board, so we'll go ahead and have a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Supervisor Christie.
Yes.
Supervisor Heinz.
No.
Supervisor Scott.
Yes.
Chair Gruh. No, item passes 3-2. Okay. So, I'm sorry. All right, so we, now we're on item 11, legal opinion regarding exclusion of citizen at board meetings. This was an item that was listed for executive session. Majority didn't want to discuss the item in exec, and I just have some concerns when we're talking about a differing legal opinion. So what I'm gonna do is I asked our, Mr. Brown, if we get into areas that he's concerned about, if it's just a general discussion, that would be one thing, but I just wanted to say that publicly. And this is an item that Supervisor Scott put on.
Supervisor.
Supervisor Christie, I apologize, go ahead.
You want me to start?
No, he'd already indicated that we wanted to have a discussion in executive session.
Very good. Before we do begin the discussion, I want to ask any members of the county administration or this board, especially those with some tenure, that the question, as well as the county attorney's office, how many citizens have ever been barred before from attending the board supervisors meeting?
Madam Chair, I was elected in 1997, and to my knowledge, no one.
Does everybody that has been around for, since Ulysses S. Grant was, since, for some time?
I do typhoon dogs.
Anybody else remember anybody ever being barred? I remember a gentleman being removed, but he was never barred. And a second question to County Attorney Brown. Did you author any letter sent to Stephanie Kirk?
Chair Gruh, supervisor Christie, I have seen and worked on such a letter, yeah.
I'm sorry?
Yes, I have seen and worked on such a letter.
And what is the dispensation of that letter? What is the condition of it? Where is it?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
I don't think your microphone is on Supervisor Bronson. Did you want the floor?
Yeah, I'm sorry, pardon me, Chair. Is it possible to obtain a copy of that letter?
Yeah, Chair Gruh, supervisor Bronson, absolutely.
Okay, and approximately when was that letter authored?
Supervisor Christie, approximately two months ago.
Two months ago, and can you just give us a synopsis of what the body of it dealt with?
Violations of your board rules.
Of this board?
Of this board.
Okay, well, I would look forward to seeing that copy, and hopefully, as has been posted for some time now, my office obtained an opinion from Munger Chadwick and Denker, a law firm here, and it cites numerous. here, and it cites numerous precedents and court actions that say basically the overarching element of this letter, which I think is most eloquently summed up and is at the core of this entire discussion. And we can go into all the background and all the issues of who said what and when, and how it was said, and the meanings of what the words were, and how we parse slanderous, personal, impertinent, profane, all of that. But the bottom line is that the element that is so pertinent and is so crystal clear is in the conclusion, and the conclusion succinctly states that it is the opinion of this office, the law firm, that Pima County has acted unlawfully under both Arizona statutory law and the United States Constitution by excluding a citizen from future public meetings of the Pima County Board of Supervisors. And I think that's the core of this whole issue, that the, the board is at fault for doing this. And consequently, as a result of this opinion and as a result of the findings of that opinion, I hereby move that the Pima County Board of Supervisors remove and retract the barring of the citizen who is the recipient of County Attorney Sam Brown's undated correspondence.
Okay. Second.
See you, Chair.
And Supervisor Bronson, seconds. Any additional discussion?
Chair Gruh.
Supervisor Scott.
If citizens take a look at the rules and regulations for the governing board, for the Board of Supervisors, they were passed in December of 2020, which was a month before this board took office. I don't know if Supervisor Bronson or Supervisor Christie, who were on the previous board, voted for those rules and regulations, but they were put in place by the previous board, and then we inherited them. I wanted to ask my colleague Supervisor Christie, when you sought the opinion from the law firm in question, did you just go to this law firm, or did you contact several others?
I just, at this point, I just went to this law firm. My main concern was the liability and exposure that the chair was putting the county in by creating a litigious environment that could lead to a settlement or a judgment of fairly epic proportions money-wise. And my concern is that we can avoid that type of litigation, we can avoid that kind of penalty by simply listing, lifting the barring that was set forth by Sam Brown. We can avoid a lot of that. It'll make the entire situation more palatable. It will restore the rights of the individual who's been sitting out in the lobby for three sessions now, and we can make it all whole by simply following what this law firm has concluded, that the Pima County, the Board of Supervisors, through the chair and the county attorney, has acted unlawfully under both Arizona statutory law and the United States Constitution. Just remove the bar. Just remove the bar, or admit that we were wrong, and let's move on.
If I could ask another question, Chair Gruh. Supervisor Christie, how did you decide which law firm to contact to, to get this opinion? Because we're, and the reason I ask the question, sir, is because we're being asked to vote in favor of a motion that you're making on the opinion of an outside law firm, and I just wanted to know what was the reasoning in, in your mind in terms of approaching this particular law firm?
I've been aware of this law firm as long as I've been in this community, which has been all my life, and they have specialized in constitutional laws and issues such as this. And quite frankly, I really don't, didn't know of any other law firm. And I think that the credentials of this law firm speak for themselves unless you have some other concern about this law firm.
Don't have a concern about the law firm at all, Supervisor Christie, just wanted to know the basis for your decision in approaching them as opposed to perhaps casting a wider net.
I did need a response in a timely fashion to make it on the agenda, and there was a willingness for them to, to proceed and respond to it in a timely fashion. And I, I think that based on the seven-page analysis citing numerous statutes as well as precedent, I think they did an outstanding job and encompassed the entire issue here, so.
Can I, can I also ask, did they provide the opinion pro bono, or did you have to pay for it?
I haven't gotten the bill yet, but I will be getting one.
All right. And, and that's a bill that, that you're going to be paying, or that your office budget?
No, my office budget will be paying, which actually will ultimately be, the taxpayers will be paying it.
Okay. So my, my concern is this. We have an opinion from an outside law firm, and, but we are supposed to be advised by the county attorney. The county attorney is the attorney for the board, as well as for all the boards, commissions, and committees that we were discussing on the previous item. I would much prefer to have a response, a written response, to the opinion from the outside law firm, from the county attorney, so that as a board member, I can know the, the best way to proceed. So.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Scott was in the middle of a, and then Supervisor Bronson.
You may want to make that as in form of a substitute motion, but as you, as I indicated initially, I thought, and I still believe that this violates that woman's First Amendment rights. My, my point of view. But, yeah, I think if your, your concern is valid and you want to make a substitute motion.
My substitute motion would be as follows. Number one, that beginning on the meeting of April 18th, that we allow Ms. Requard to be able to attend board meetings. And number two, that we ask for a written response to the opinion that was submitted by this outside law firm, because this outside law firm is saying that our rules and regulations, which were adopted by the previous board, are unconstitutional and likely to be challenged. And I think we need a response to that. They went a lot further than, than just addressing this issue.
May I, may I just correct a statement that you made?
Supervisor Christie.
You said that they were criticizing, they were utilizing what the actions of this board, they cited other instances where similar situations occurred.
Yes, they did.
And the rulings were in, in a consistent fashion of what their conclusion was. So they, they cited cases, they cited.
They, and I'm, and I'm not a, I'm not a lawyer, Supervisor Christie, none of us are, but what I would like is a, a legal response from our attorney to this opinion from an outside firm. So I'll restate the motion, which is that Ms. Requard be allowed to continue board meetings beginning on April 18th, and that we ask for a written response from our attorney as to the entirety of this opinion.
I'll second that.
Sub a motion, and by Supervisor Scott in a second, by Supervisor Christie. I will say that we have board policies that are in place, and if there is a majority of the board that wants to change those policies, then we should really have a discussion about that, because I think it's important. But I'm really curious about this language that was adopted 1220. I believe that that piece of it, that the barring, was something that was much earlier, like 1997. So I just want to, I just think it's important for us to have this discussion. And the other is that when you're in this position as the chair, and you have, we've had people that were escorted out, it did not cause the requirement of a meeting to be shut down. It was, that individual basically was escorted out and walked out. The problem that we have here is that when there was a request to have someone be seated, that didn't occur. And so in order to have some sort of semblance of being able to do the people's business during this board meeting, we need to have a real honest discussion about what is acceptable and not acceptable in a public meeting. Because the kinds of outbursts that happen here in this room would never occur at the state legislature. That would not be allowed. And so I am, I do have some concern about being able to get through our meeting without sort of any, any consequences if there is a major disruption. So I just wanted to say that. Anything else? Supervisor Christie.
I agree with you, Madam Chair, that a discussion of that, those issues and those topics needs to take place. I think that's another subject for another time, and that what we're facing right now on the floor is a motion that I think is separate from that, and that needs to be acted on, but we take your comments into consideration.
And I, and I do also want to say that I don't know what the policy is regarding expenditures in our individual offices, and whether we can ask for an outside legal opinion without any process or checking in, using county funds, because we do already have representation.
Madam Chair, have you ever used a consultant or paid for a consultant at any time?
Yeah, and we went through a process, absolutely. Yeah. Yep. So I just wanted to know, because legal opinion, I think, is a little bit different than a facilitator, and so we can also have that discussion as well.
Chair Gruh.
Yes, Supervisor Scott.
Thank you very much. The reason I ask for a response to the entirety of the, of the opinion is if you look at the opinion, it goes into great depth talking about not just that particular regulation, but our, our rules and regulations overall. And so if we ever get to a point where we are looking at some kind of overhaul of rules and regulations, then I, I want to know that we're proceeding on solid ground based on what our attorney advises us. And, and so that's why I'm asking for a response to the entirety of the opinion.
Okay. Any questions or clarification? All right. Sub a motion in a second, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
I think Supervisor Heinz wanted to.
Oh Supervisor Heinz? I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. I'm just curious, Chair and Supervisor Christie, did the county attorney tell you that they were unavailable to provide a legal opinion? Or did they refuse to provide a legal opinion on this issue as our counsel, as the, of course, counsel that wouldn't charge us? Do you have an email or some communication with Laura Conover or, or Sam Brown that indicate that they were unable to or refused to supply the opinion that you were looking for?
I was looking at the, as a reaction to Mr. Brown's letter, and that was how he was responding to the situation. I felt his response to the situation as our attorney was erroneous, and I wanted to have a second opinion, an outside opinion, to analyze that, to see if my feelings were correct. And according to the outside opinion, they're saying this, that the board acted erroneously and wrong, and this was a result of our attorneys direct, being directed to write that letter. And I simply wanted a response from an outside firm to respond to Mr. Brown's letter.
So your answer is no?
Can't remember the question.
And to your question, or comments, actually, several of them, I think that the, the comportment or behavior in this room should be what we would expect in kindergarten, at least. And that's not acceptable right there, right? So I think that if, and, and let's just look at the, look at the warning.
Go ahead Supervisor Heinz.
Like, it's very, very clear. Outbursts, breaches of the peace, boisterous conduct, or other unlawful interference will result in that individual being asked to leave the meeting room. It says it very clearly. You read it every time, and people, many people, not all people, but many, most, I would say, disregard that this entire, the entire time. Clapping, whistling, hollering, shouting, screaming at us or shouting at us if they don't like a particular vote. None of this is acceptable behavior. All of it has been warned against right here, and the moment that happens, that individual should be asked to leave. And we have not been enforcing this, and that is not a criticism of the chair, or it's just been very difficult, obviously, but we need to, or we need to remove the policy. I don't like us going, it makes it look like we're going against the county attorney or going against Sam Brown. He's acting on behalf of this board based on the policies that we have put into, or that the previous board put into place. So it's not okay for us to do on a case-by-case basis and say, "Okay, it's all right that Shirley's committing slander. I don't have First Amendment rights." That's cool, but it's not actually cool. We need to be consistent, and if we're going to change the policy, we don't take a granular approach and second-guess our attorney and make him look like somehow he's doing something wrong, because he is not. He's acting on our behalf based on the policies that are currently in force. So I very much oppose kind of second-guessing and letting Shirley back in at this point, because that's not what our board policy is. If we're going to change board policy, let's have a vote about doing that. I guess we couldn't do that now due to open meeting law at the next meeting, but we should not be carving out a little, you know, it, it really undermines the authority of the board more than, more than.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Christie.
I think Supervisor Heinz's point is well taken, specifically since you do read a statement before every board meeting regarding those issues that Supervisor Heinz brought up. Also in the, in that statement, which is read at every meeting and provided at every meeting, it states that supervise, that the, all attendees are advised that the Board of Supervisors strongly adhere to the quote "rules of civility and decorum." Can you provide me a list of those rules? So why, why if we're going to take all of the issues in the statement that is read, you can't cherry pick items either when you can't even provide a rules of civility? What are these rules of civility? I've never seen a pamphlet listing the rules, civility and decorum. What rules, where is that list?
Supervisor Christie, that's exactly why the very first meeting, I was chair, I read a very long statement because of that very issue. And then it was, you know, these are the norms, and then there was an issue with saying what norms are. So then I looked at the policy, and then it was dated 1996, 97, and that's what I read. And then it had been updated, but the Board of Supervisors' rules and regulations hadn't updated that change. But I think the language to what I read at the beginning of, before call to the audience, has been in existence since before, four of us at least were on the board. Yeah.
I'm just asking for proof of those rules of civility. I've never seen them.
I think, I think that that's one of those things where you're like, they're sort of, the way you conduct yourself in public meetings, and now I think it needs to be delineated out in very specific detail, unfortunately, and, and that's not something that I wanted to do on my own. It's something that we have to have a board discussion about. Anyway, we have a motion in a second, so I think that we've, I feel like we've exhausted the, yeah, we've exhausted the conversation.
Chair Gruh.
I just called the question.
No, no, actually, you have to, so I'm going to go to legal, because when you call the question, it's not an automatic assumption that we stop conversation. You then vote, if you get a second, then we have to vote on whether to vote. So that's, that's why I did it the last time that way, so I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Brown, and then we'll, we'll vote.
Just wanted to provide a point of clarity. I think Supervisor Scott, to your comments, and Supervisor Christie, this is not a situation where you're getting a second opinion on an opinion from your attorney. You have not received an opinion from us. You've, you've looked at the letter. I have offered your office to come and talk about the letter, and you politely declined that offer. I am the attorney, and Pima County Attorney's Office is the statutory attorney for the county, for the entire board. What is, what I, what I think is about to happen is you all are about to vote on an outside legal opinion before getting an opinion from your attorney.
Chair Gruh, that's not accurate.
Let me, let me, go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
If that's not accurate, I'd, I'd like to understand that. But my offer stands. Anytime any of you need an opinion from your statutory attorney, we're here. I think, I think there's an issue with being offered an opportunity to talk to your attorney, declining it, going to get a second opinion, and then acting on the second opinion before hearing from your attorney.
So you wanted me to ask?
Just a moment, just a moment. We had Supervisor Scott and then Supervisor Christie. Are you, are you, was the end of your statement? Thank you. Supervisor Scott.
Thank you, Chair Gruh. But with, with respect, Mr. Brown, what I asked for in my motion was a response to the legal opinion that Supervisor Christie requested.
And it's not a second opinion?
That was, that, that was what. That was, that, that was what I requested, a response to the opinion that, that he solicited. And I want to go on record and say what I said the first time we talked about this, which is that I found Ms. Requard's comments to not only be offensive and in violation of the rules and regulations of the board as stated, but that they also trivialized pedophilia, trivialized the lived experiences of people who've actually been victims of pedophilia. Having said that, having said that, the reality is that one of our colleagues did get an opinion from an outside law firm that has been attached to two agendas, so there's certainly matters of public record. I've asked for our attorney to respond to that opinion from an outside attorney, and I also feel that it's time to move on from this issue, because it is distracting us and deterring us from taking on the substantive issues that the people of Pima County expect us to take on. And so that was why I made the motion the way that I did, because those are the facts on the ground. But it was, with respect, sir, asking you to respond to the opinion. That was it.
Supervisor Christie, anything else? Okay. We have a motion and a second. I'll go ahead and ask for a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Brown.
Yes.
Supervisor Christie.
Yes.
Supervisor Heinz.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Yes.
Chair Gerhalde.
Yes. Item passes five votes. Okay, now we're moving on to item 12, update on county initiatives to address homelessness on public safety. County Administrator Lesher.
Madam Chair, before.
Supervisor Christie.
Could you, could you just recap what we just voted on, particularly?
I think, I think, I think our clerk can send the information, and then Ms. Requard will get a communication. Thank you. Go ahead. Item 12. Oh, absolutely. Just a moment. We're going to, our County Administrator.
No, I was going to ask the same thing. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Chair Gerhalde, I was just wondering, I'm sorry, I don't have the number of the Rio Nuevo lease. We do have folks in the audience who are here to speak on that, and I believe they need to leave. Is it, do we have 41? I'm sorry, I don't have, let me, Mr. Debonis, can you help me with the number?
No, it is 41.
Right, and that I know that. Thank you.
Thank you. I do think in general, when we have guests that are, that are coming from outside of our community and sitting, we, I'd like to, as much as possible, go ahead and take those items out of order at the beginning, including the time that Dr. Cullen has been sitting in the back of the room. I'd like to make sure that we move those items, as a general standard, up to the front. So item 41, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
So if we can go ahead and I'll, if there's no objection, we'll go ahead and move to 41. It's Rio Nuevo Multipurpose Facilities District to Provide a Ground Lease Option Agreement for Property Located at 75 East Broadway. This is a no-cost, three-year term. Any?
Thank you very much.
I'll move the item from. I'll second, I'll second. We have a motion and a second, and then a presentation?
Correct, if I may. Chairman Gerhalde, both Mr. Fletcher, Mr. Fletcher, Fletcher McCusker is here, who's the chair of the Rio Nuevo Board, and Deputy County Administrator Debonis is also here to speak to the staff side of this issues. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Hello from Rio Nuevo. We have an item in front of you called 75 East Broadway. For those of you that are new to the board, this is a partnership that Rio Nuevo and the county formed pre-pandemic to develop the parcel across the street from TEP. That RFP process was responded to. It was primarily designed to create primary employment, i.e. an office building. We did have a response to that. COVID pretty much wiped out the ability to finance that project. So what we've asked for you to consider is a procurement process that's a little more wide open, that basically allows us, on your behalf, to seek any and all comers for that property. Let the market speak to us about what is the best, highest and best use for that. We can't do it without your approval or permission, but we have some flexibility in procurement law that you don't have. So that's why we would partner. Rio Nuevo would solicit the proposals, then bring them back to the county for your ultimate approval. What's in front of you today is basically an option for a ground lease, that if we have a successful procurement, we have the option to enter into this ground lease, which could at some point lead to a permanent lease and an option to purchase that property.
Thank you, and thank you for being here and for your patience. Any questions? Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Pardon me, Chair Gerhalde, I just wondered, because Ms. Lesher had introduced both Mr. McCusker and, and Mr. Debonis. Mr. Debonis, any information for the board from the county's perspective?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Scott, Mr. McCusker did an excellent job explaining what this action entails.
Thank you.
Bless you.
Thank you. Motion and second. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, so are we going back on the agenda, or do we have anyone else that's waiting for an item?
There's a gentleman right over here.
Do you want to give, 55. Oh, it's a public hearing. Can we go ahead and take the public hearings, board members? Okay. So I believe we have, 54 was taken off, and so we have 55, which is a type II conditional use permit, which is a hearing. We have a zoning code text amendment hearing. 57 is a rezoning ordinance. 58 is a rezoning ordinance, and 59 is rezoning resolution. Is there anyone present vote in opposition? And yes, for 55, is there anyone that would like to, we have several speaker cards.
Okay.
Okay, very well. All right. So we're going to go ahead and take 55. That's a type II conditional use permit for East Tankaverty Road. And so this is a hearing, and we have several speakers. Meredith Bradford, John Bradford, and Ian Kidd are the first three. We have several.
Oh, this is for Meredith?
Meredith Bradford. She, she can't be here today. She's watching her son.
Okay, but then are you?
I'm going to speak on her behalf of, yes. So I'm going to do both, if that's okay. Yeah. Hi, my name is Meredith Bradford, and my home is adjacent to the proposed project site. One of the biggest concerns is flooding. The builder plan says only 13 of the land was, will be developed, but that doesn't include the parking areas, which is roughly 65% of the remaining area. There are very large drainage pipes that emptied out along our neighborhood. On August 2 of 2021, we, we watched as the flooding took out our neighbor's wall, flooded their house. For us, it flooded our entire backyard. That specific night, my husband, me, and I were outside, in the, in water up to our knees, diverting the water away from our house, so our house didn't get flooded. And you can see, this is actually my backyard. So, and, and everything was flooded through our entire backyard that night, and then our neighbors as well was flooded because this wall broke. The next morning, we assessed our damage. We had, we had minimal water damage in our home, but we did have water damage in our home on the north side, as well as ruining parts of our pool equipment, having to drain our entire pool, and from all the dirt and sand filling in our pool. I have to develop proposed project with site with four units and all the pavement. They're proposing, where's the water going to, where's the water going to go? I propose a flood assessment to be conducted prior to the following site to be built, built on. We ask to reject this proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, did you want to make a statement, or is that?
I also do have a, the density one, and that's a longer one, so I can do that one as well.
Okay, so you were reading that statement on Meredith's behalf?
Correct.
You were the next speaker if you wanted to address?
The density one as well?
Let me see.
I can do that as well. And that one's.
Did you submit more than one?
Yes. So John Bradford for me, and then Meredith Bradford.
No, no, right. No, I'm saying, when you're saying density, I just called your name.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, yeah. So this was, this was my, what I was going to read for.
Oh, please.
Is that okay?
Yes, that's.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. Hey, we just barely made it. Tankaverty has began as a small community remote from the city and was settled by ranchers back in the mid-1800s. Today, most of Tankaverty is still home to large acre plots where we have a strong equestrian presence. While Tucson has increased in population significantly over the years, Tankaverty has grown at a much slower rate. It is not, it is no secret that much of the land in Tankaverty is in covenants which are meant to dictate its land use and where put in place control growth to ensure land preservation. Picture one shown in the aerial view of our Tankaverty neighborhood. The proposed development is uncharacteristic to the Tankaverty Valley. It is not part of the cohesive plan to introduce high-density housing to the Tankaverty Valley. It is not appropriate transition from low-density rural residential to medium-density residential. The nearby residential properties are low-density suburban ranch and RX-1, which is one acre, one acres per parcel. Picture two shows 17 homes being impacted by this proposal. The Maranani project of four rental units and a three-quarter, three-quarter acres is characteristic of improper zoning. There's literally no multifamily houses in this area within five mi, with a five-mile perimeter. The dense, the density proposed is contrary to Pima County's comprehensive plan that governs much of its surrounding areas. The density also is inconsistent with other nearby neighborhoods. Picture three and four show three homes bordering the proposal parcel for development, including mine. As seen in the photo, the neighborhood, the neighborhood consists of homes with one-acre lots and 2,000-plus square foot homes. While Mr. Maranani stipulated that there is 68 alternative options for building on the RCV zone land, there are two, two that he did not mention. One, build two houses with 2,000 square feet and actual backyards, and number two, build one house with a backyard. Both of these options are profitable and feasible without risking the characteristics of the neighborhood of their tank, or the Tankaverty Valley. The valley was originated to be as ranch-style to accommodate the citizens who preferred livestock and equestrian lifestyle and maintain, and maintain that culture today. We ask that you reject this proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ian Kidd, followed by Mary Finley and Philip Granillo.
Good afternoon.
What was the other name other than Philip?
Mary Finley, Ian Kidd.
I'm Ms. McIrby speaking on behalf of Ian Kidd. He's unable to attend today. Members of the board, I would like this statement voicing opposition to agenda items number 55 reference the type II conditional use permit P23CU 00001 Mariani E. Tankaverty Road read into today's meeting minutes. People must have faith and confidence in our government for it to function. This is even more critical at the local level, where there is an even greater need for transparency. Unfortunately, in this case, there are some very troubling connections and circumstances, which I am sure the board are completely aware, unaware of. The troubling issue with this agenda item number 55 is the apparent case of self-interest whereby one of the people involved with making the recommendation to approve the project to the county administration was previously involved with an application to introduce a high-density house project into the community. Mr. Portner was hired as a spokesperson for the developers Red Point and worked on their behalf to get approval for the project. At minimum, Mr. Portner should have recused himself from any involvement in the case to avoid appearance of self-interest. The aforementioned project was ultimately denied. However, approval of agenda item number 55 would create the precedent, the precedent to allow this and other high-density products to be revisited. This type of project, types of projects coupled with what appears to be an arbitrary and capricious approach to spot zone has the potential to destroy the very fabric that makes up the Tankaverty community and its uniqueness in Pima County. I urge the board to reject this proposal or at the very least tabled until the process can be reviewed further. Thank you for your consideration, Ian Kidd.
Thank you. Mary Finley?
Good morning. My name is actually Joanne Trigo, but I am reading the statement on behalf to the Board of Supervisors deciding on the building proposal and not afterwards. Additionally, according to the permit application, there will be spaces for 16 vehicles on this three-quarter acre parcel. Let me say that again. 16 vehicles. The average number of vehicles on the properties boarding this one is two. Two. And these properties are Zoned Suburban Ranch and RX-1, which means they generally contain more than one acre of land. In the hearing conducted in February, it was implied that the additional cars exiting the proposed development during peak hours would be a small bump in traffic. I find this conclusion a bit absurd. The intersection of Tankaverty and Houghton Roads allows for one lane of traffic, north, south, and east-west, and in current traffic during peak hours, cars are literally backed up for one mile going across the Tankaverty Bridge. The congestion returns one hour later when travelers come home from work. Specific to this proposal, one new driveway will be created for the project. The proposal has four rental units with space available for 16 cars. In a perfect world, two cars per residence would be expected, but this is not a perfect world, and rental units usually have more than one car. It would be expected that with eight additional visitor parking spaces, there would be a total of 24 cars on a three-quarter acre lot with four rental units. This plan falls short of common sense planning when it comes to first responders as well. It has significant limits for ingress and egress to Tankaverty Road and is critical in regard to emergency vehicles. There is no turnaround for EMS vehicles in this plan, and it would require the vehicles to be reversed in order to come out on the main road. We ask that all of the comprehensive, detailed studies required by the county be completed before the request for conditional use has been granted. Due diligence is critical to ensure that one-off decisions, poor decisions, do not cause more harm than good. We ask you to reject.
Thank you. Philip Granillo, and then Joanne Trigo, Charlie Manhertz, and, I'm sorry, is it Audrey Iyer?
Avade Iyer, I believe.
Avade Iyer, thank you.
My name is Philip Granillo. I'm within 100 feet of this proposal, 150 feet. So I'm going to discuss supermajority. What is supermajority? A supermajority, or qualified majority, is a requirement for the proposal to gain a specific level of support that exceeds simple majority in order to have effect. It's an effective tool in legislation, often used to facilitate quality deliberation and more consequential decision-making. A rezoning supermajority is a minimum of 20% of neighbors located within the rezoning area 150 feet from the border. And we supplied, we sent, all of us, that affects 87% of this, of the people that are in this area that are being affected, we sent all of our opposition signatures, so you guys should all have those, in addition to the previous meeting where we had over 20 letters of opposition that were sent in. So 20% of neighbors located within the rezoning area and 20% of the parcels directly impacted by the rezoning proposal. 11208 East Tankaverty Road, supermajority calculations based on Arizona House Bill 2116. Parcel is bordered by nine properties. The nine parcels impacted by the proposal permitting is nine acres. Protest area within 150 feet of the parcel is seven acres or 77%. Eight out of nine parcels, or 87%, oppose this proposal. Given the values provided by AZHB 2116, these calculations easily represent more than the required 20% in protest. And as you can see in the pictures here. So in summary, the supermajority total percentages required to prevent rezoning are significantly above the required 20% for area and impacted parcels. Petitioners from the immediate neighborhood, the Tankaverty Valley Association, and the community of Tankaverty are solidly united and opposed to the conditional use permit of three-quarters of an acre for four rental units. We urge you to reject this proposal. And I thank you guys for. We urge you to reject this proposal, and I thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. Joanne Trigo.
And you all are welcome to come up closer after I call your name, or all of you.
And just a quick question for staff.
Supervisor Bronson?
Yeah, do we have a supermajority?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Bronson, this is not a rezoning. The property has been zoned RVC since 1963. This is a conditional use permit. There is no supermajority applicable here whatsoever. Across the street is a Circle K, also zoned RVC. So that's sort of the background of what we have.
Just wanted a deeper clarification for the speakers.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Joanne Trigo. I am in attendance on behalf of the Tancaverdi Valley Association as a member of their Board of Directors. I want to start, first of all, by thanking all of you for your service and your contributions to Pima County. You are appreciated. The TVVA is united with the neighbors in operation, in opposition to this proposed development, and we would like to ask why this process appears to be expedited. Surely, the owner and developer have had all the time they required to create the plans and submit their applications to the county. The public hearing for this proposal was February 8th, and the citizens had less than two months to prepare for this board meeting. Given the agenda is Item Number 55, I'm guessing that scheduling this topic at a later date would not have been difficult. But even with those time limitations, I think that they've done a splendid job of pulling together their opposition and sharing their unified voices in this cause. It's also important to note that there's been little to no communication from the owner development to the neighbors, even though he knows that they are all 100% opposed to this development. Wouldn't it be more efficient and effective to put all the cards on the table and discuss our differences of opinion? I'm asking that the board reject this proposal for a conditional use permit and ask the owner and developer to work with these neighbors and create a solution that works across the board, and I thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Charlie Manhurst.
My name is Philip Granio. I'm speaking on behalf of Charlie, who's at work. A lot of people are working today, so thank you for letting us speak. I, Charlie Manhurst, am opposed to the conditional use permit being applied for 11208 East Tancaverdi Road. At the original meeting held on 2/8/23, Stephen Mariani stated that this was the least intrusive use of the land. He also stated that this wasn't the financial, wasn't for financial gain because it was the least profitable use for the land. If that were true, then why not develop it as a single-family home? If it's because he's trying to improve the community, then that is an unacceptable answer. It's clear that the community doesn't want rental apartments or townhomes, townhouses in this area. It would cost significantly less to build one home with one set of required utilities and amenities than it would to be built four separate apartments with all the utilities and amenities needed for each apartment. According to Mr. Mariani, previous statements, a single-family home would net him a larger profit, and common sense tells us that it's far less expensive. I also believe that this sets an unwanted precedent within the community. There are other undeveloped properties in the immediate area. There are 5.5 acres at the southwest corner of Conestoga and Tancaverdi. There's also 1.6 acres directly across the street from this address. If we allow this to be developed as an apartment complex or rental units, then what's to stop these property owners from developing more unwanted apartment complexes? If there, if there is a need, as Mr. Mariani had previously stated, for smaller homes for the elderly and teachers, there is already an area that appears to be zoned for smaller homes and lots at the southwest corner of Tancaverdi Loop and Tancaverdi Road. Charlie Manhurst, 11300 East Comanchero Circle, Tucson, Arizona. Thank you.
Thank you. Iyer, I'm sorry, I don't want to mispronounce. Aude Iyer?
Yep.
Okay, and then?
Yes.
Missy McIver and Stephen Mariani. Those are our last speakers.
So I'm reading this on behalf of the Iyers, Avede and Tank Iyer. I, Avede Iyer, am opposed to the conditional use permit being applied on 211208 East Tancaverdi Road. In addition to safety, traffic, and thereby property value concerns, there's significant water flow issues in the area. During certain heavy rains, water pools and dumps onto the properties on the south side of Tancaverdi Road. The hazard has created, created by a drainage pipe installed by the county underneath Tancaverdi Road. Two years ago, this water got so high it destroyed 100-foot block wall and flooded the backyard of the property, and you can see the, and see the affinities, as well as allowing some of the water into our home. Insurance would not cover this because it identified, they identified it as a drainage pipe, as being a portable cause of the incident. Pima County declined to provide any assistance to rebuilding the wall or regrade the area outside the wall to allow for better water flow in the future. I'm afraid construction of apartments may exacerbate this, this problem. Please reject this. And then, Avede Iyer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Missy McIver. Okay. And then we have Stephen Mariani.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Supervisors. My name is Stephen Mariani. There does seem to be a great deal of confusion regarding this project. These are all of my neighbors. I have lived, worked, and played within 30 seconds of this parcel for more than 50 years. I am intimately familiar with its needs. I'm intimately familiar with the love for this area that I'm sure they share. I'd like to address a few of the concerns. There was a suggestion that this might be a profit motive or something. It is not. The suggestion that one house could be built here as opposed to another use makes no sense in that the project is not zoned for that. As someone in the back had already pointed out, it is RVC-zoned. This proposed use is within that zoning. It is not just a good use, it is the perfect use for this spot in that it borders to the west, a almost industrial use with a bus depot, and just to the east of it, residential housing. And so this is a perfect transition. It's residential, it's low-rise, it's low-light, it's perfectly congruent with everything around it. It is necessary for this neighborhood. I've lived out here for a long time. There's nowhere for in-laws, for parents who want to be near young families, for grandparents that don't want to leave and go, for the teachers that teach in the school around there. There is simply no inventory there. This is my neighborhood. I care deeply about this area. My intent is to improve this neighborhood. Someone mentioned the 68 uses within the RVC zoning classification. There are, and it's my understanding that 67 of them are retail uses, a quick trip, a Circle K. We don't, I don't want that. I live out there. That would create traffic issues. All other uses that are approved for the zoning would create traffic issues. This is the least impactful project that could be considered for this parcel, and that's why I'm approaching this development as opposed to something else. As far as traffic, this would be local traffic. I'm sorry, ma'am, is that my time? Oh, this would be local traffic, so this wouldn't be traffic as opposed to every other use that could be considered that would be coming into the neighborhood. This would be traffic that would be milling around the neighborhood. My children went to these schools. I'm obviously concerned about the traffic as well. As opposed to the watershed issue, or with regard to the watershed issue, I've had full engineering plans done to improve the current watershed on this property. So upon development, it will actually flow better than it currently does, and so the issues they've had with flooding in the past would actually be improved. This is at the crown of Tancaverdi Road. It's a quarter mile from the west. This is not a flood sort of thing. This is a watershed issue. That issue would be improved with this development, and therefore, I don't think that concern makes any sense either. I think that's generally it. I just wanted to show up in support of the project. I think it's important for, for the neighborhood. I think that the need is there, and I ask for your approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. I think if there are no other speakers, I'll go ahead and, and close the hearing.
Okay.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, just really quickly.
Supervisor Heinz.
And this might be to you, sir. Could you just clarify, I heard in the comments, I've heard, I'm reading this as four single-story individual, like residential homes, but I have heard apartment complex.
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, thank you for bringing that up. Let me clarify that. I have no interest in any sort of apartments anywhere around the neighborhood here. It's a scenic area. I love it as much as everyone else. These are two, for two-bedroom homes with two cars apiece. Someone said something like 20 cars or 16 cars, two cars apiece. As far as it being a different development, it is, as someone said, directly across the street from a Circle K. No one is going to want a single-family home directly across the street from the Circle K, which is so bright you can see it from space. So it's just, it's just not a place for a single-family home. This is the perfect transition. It's four two-bedroom homes, completely congruent with everything around it, and the perfect transition from the bus depot to the residential parcel to the side. So I can't think of a better idea.
Thank you. Any other questions, any other questions for?
No, you're done.
I'm sorry, the hearing has been closed. Any other questions for the applicant?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
For the applicant as well as her staff, is that allowable?
I believe so.
Just to clarify, the supermajority issue does not apply in this case, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's my understanding.
And these are apartments?
Townhouses, actually.
Townhouses.
Low-rise, low-light.
And would you suggest that provides affordable rental housing?
As compared to this area, I think it could be classified as affordable housing, yes, in an infill that's absolutely necessary.
And could staff formulate or clarify what Mr. Portner's relationship is with Pima County? There seemed to be some kind of inference that there was some kind of a, some nefarious type of situation. Is that the situation?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie, Jim Portner has been appointed by the board to serve as a hearing officer and a hearing administrator. The code and the overall process embraces the idea that that person serving in that role is very knowledgeable about the processes and the zoning code themselves, correct? So Mr. Portner also is a private planning consultant. So in the past, there have been cases that he, he has not taken on or not served as a hearing administrator because of a potential conflict of interest. In this case, we do not believe there's any conflict of interest. He did represent a rezoning technically that would be within the city of Tucson on the other side of Houghton in the overall area, but he has no financial connection to this applicant, and there is no conflict of interest. We need a experienced arbiter to serve as a hearing administrator. Many of those type of people are in the real estate business or in the development business. So it's, it's normal that we would have someone like Mr. Portner serving as a hearing administrator.
Let's talk for a minute.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Let's talk for just a second about the other uses available to this property. I heard the number 67 different available uses. Could you list or describe some of those buildings or businesses or structures that could be legally installed and built in these, in this area?
Absolutely. First and foremost, when this was rezoned to RVC in the early 60s, it was stated for commercial purposes. So I agree with the applicant that you could not come in and just build a home based on that old, old rezoning. But the list of conditional uses include an antique store, apparel store, apartments, art needlework, art store, automobile accessory, parts and supplies, bakery, bank, barber, beauty shop, bicycle shop, bookstore, cafe, or luncheon. I could go on and on.
Would you, would you characterize those establishments as requiring more parking than has been stated?
Every use listed would be much more intense, would generate a lot more traffic, would generate a lot more parking, would have a lot more impact typically than on a surrounding neighborhood.
So Mr. Merriman?
Yes, sir, Mariani.
Marion, would it not be in the best interest of the community to put in the type of development that you're looking at of affordable housing as opposed to deciding to go and putting in that, any one of those or more of those lists of, of businesses that could be there? It seems to me that by fighting what you're doing and by fighting this development, the community might be shooting itself in the foot to make way for something what is, maybe a car dealership, I don't know.
Yes, sir. Thank you for pointing that out. I am trying to protect the neighborhood, and if it's decided, if we determine that it's something like this, it can never be something else, and that's, that's the point.
And to staff, how many other properties in the Tancaverdi Valley have this kind of zoning?
Very, very minimal. It's a small area along this spot here, which is Tancaverdi and Tancaverdi Loop. So the Barnyard Restaurant.
And where is that in conjunction to this?
Probably a couple hundred feet away.
So it's, I heard the term that this project is uncharacteristic to the neighborhood, yet we've got the barnyard right there and a Circle K right there. So by installing what you want to do with this property, by constructing what you want to do, that would prevent any other kind of, of untoward entity from becoming an uncharacteristic element of the community?
Yes, sir, that's exactly right.
Any, any other points, staff, that you want to?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Christie, there was some discussion about precedent. Again, it's a very limited area that is already zoned RVC. There's another area across the street, probably 100 feet to the northeast that could go through a conditional use permit. Currently, it's been planned, some type of office building. Right now, it's vacant. That could be, but other than, than these two properties, there's very little RVC left.
And I understand the Barnyard is expanding.
The Barnyard did receive a conditional use permit approval to expand into the property to its east. That's correct.
Are there any other areas that I'm not pointing out that need to be mentioned here on this?
No, Supervisor Christie, I don't think so. If I'm allowed, though, I would like to make one other comment. There was some comment about the hearing officer Portnoy, about some sort of conflicts. I have never met that man. I saw him once over a video conference, but I'm not sure if there's some suggestion that there's some connection between us in some, some way, but to the extent that there is, I wanted to make sure that that was clear. I never met this man.
I do have a question. How far away is the bus bay from this property? I'm looking at a Google map because as soon as he said Circle K, I just kind of wanted to get an idea, and since I don't drive up and down Tancaverdi that much, and I do live, I used to live very close to a bus bay, and I do know that there's a lot of traffic. All the bus drivers go in, that kind of thing. How far away is, is the bus barn from this property?
It is the adjacent property to the west side and, yes, to the west side, and to the east side of the property is.
No, no, thank you. I'm looking at the picture, I understand that it's a bus, but it is a bus bay, right?
Yes.
They park all the school buses, all the bus drivers park their vehicles and then get in to drive the buses and come out. I'm just, I just wanted to understand, and once I zoomed in, I could see the school buses.
Yes, Chair.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Thank you. I had a question for staff first. We have recommendations from the hearing administrator, from Development Services, and from Transportation. There were concerns raised about flooding. Was the Regional Flood Control District involved in this matter, or were the concerns that were raised about flooding addressed at all when, when this matter was being considered? Because I've gone back through the material several times and haven't seen any reference to it, and yet that was a significant concern of the, of the neighbors, and just wanted to ask staff how that was addressed, if it was.
Yes, Madam Chair, Supervisor Scott, this, we could call them apartments or townhomes, they're going to be rented, so in order for, for him to do this, if it's approved today, he'll have to obtain an approved site construction permit. Part of that process, flood is directly reviewing every site construction permit. So flood will demand of him and impose any regulations required to make the flooding situation better.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Mariani, I'm not going to ask Supervisor Bronson to be our board's historian again, but in my brief experience on the board, it is really rare to have this number of neighbors come in and, and express the kind of passionate concerns. of neighbors come in and express the kind of passionate concerns that they have. I wanted to ask you what you've done to respond to the concerns of your neighbors, especially given your long-term commitment and residency in the area.
Thank you, Supervisor Scott. In the early part of this process, I did, did an outreach to the neighborhood, had a meeting at the 49ers Country Club, and actually got the written approval of all of my adjacent neighbors. Everyone that borders this property signed off on this idea. Everyone that borders the property, not further out. This is a small contingent of a growing area where just the idea that anything gets done of any kind, anywhere, is simply a no. And so it doesn't matter if it's logical or if it's necessary. It's just always no. Nothing can get done. So there's nothing that can get approved, nothing that can get pushed forward, nothing that can get developed that the neighborhood needs, no matter how important it is. It's just no. It's just, it's just a blanket no to everything. So that's an active voice, and I certainly want them to be heard. Be happy to meet with them separately, to talk about why this is, again, not just a good use for the neighborhood, but really the perfect use for this parcel, just the perfect use. I've owned it for quite a while. I've given this a great deal of consideration, gave some thought to, and actually to a commercial development, and because I live here, because I love this area so much, because I want to protect it from something like that, if I develop it into this, which is completely congruent with everything else, I can assure there will never be anything else. And that's my goal.
One other question. I'm sorry.
No, I just am concerned because it's 12:30 and we haven't, we haven't progressed very far in the agenda yet.
I just wanted to ask staff, how many hearing administrators do we have that work on contract for us? I've heard Mr. Portner's name a number of times during the three years I've been on the board. Just wondered how many hearing administrators we have.
We, sorry, Madam Chair, Supervisor Scott, we have two. Typically, Mr. Portner is the primary, and in those rare circumstances when he does declare a conflict, then we go to his backup, Michael Marks.
And again, how long has he been serving in that capacity?
At least 20 years, I'm aware of. Both of them have served for an extensive period of time.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. I believe we have a motion in a second? Yes, Supervisor Christie.
One real quick question, just for the record.
Yes, sir.
Do you have no plans to put an AutoZone or a Sees Candy or a shoe store or anything? It's simply affordably housing, affordable housing for the Tancaverdi Valley with four units?
Yes, Supervisor Christie, that's correct.
And I think that we, I mean, we don't know whether it's going to, I think it's your, your idea of what affordable is, right? So it may not be.
It is relative.
Right? It is relative. It may be for that area, but not to say it's affordable housing in maybe the way many people think of it. Okay. So I don't have a motion. I don't believe we did close the public hearing.
I don't think we actually closed the public hearing.
I did close the public hearing, and then.
Did you get a second?
No, I just closed the public hearing.
May I?
Yes, Supervisor Christie.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to close public hearing and to approve P23CU00001, Mariani, East Tancaverdi Road, subject, subject in the hearing administrator, subject to the hearing administrator recommended approval, subject to standard and special conditions.
Second. I have a motion by Supervisor Christie and a second by Supervisor Bronson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes unanimously. Thank you, and thank you to the community for coming out.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Supervisor. Have a good day.
Thank you. All right. Now we are moving on to, back to the agenda, item 12, update on county initiatives to address homelessness and public safety.
Thank you very.
Please go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much, Chair Gruhava, members of the board. Excuse me, the discussion about public safety issues, we've been discussing drug misuse in general, and more recently, fentanyl, and what is happening in our community more specifically. And at the last meeting, Tucson Police Chief Chad Kazmar was here to talk about some of his activities, and what we wanted to do today is just provide the board with a bit of an overview of what has been happening in the space of how we're fighting fentanyl and what we're seeing in our community. So with that, you do have a written report summarizing a few of the activities, but we do have Drs. Garcia and Cullen here today to discuss it in greater detail. Dr. Garcia?
Thank you. And thank you for your patience, to all of you. Ideally, again, I just want to make sure that when we have staff presenting, that we bring these items to the front of the meeting. But, Dr. Garcia.
Chair Gruhava, Administrator Lesher, appreciate the introduction. So back in 2015, the Community Health Needs Assessment that was performed by.
I'm sorry, Dr. Garcia, can you move your mic a little closer to you?
Sorry about that.
There you go. Thanks.
Back in 2015, the Community Health Needs Assessment first identified substance misuse and addiction as a priority public health issue for this community. And since that time, the Health Department has been engaging in a variety of activities that address and mitigate this particular challenge. One of the things that we wanted to share with you today is how some of this intersects with homelessness, specifically with that piece that is, has to do with chronic homelessness. But to be clear, all homeless, all chronically homeless people aren't necessarily substance misusing, nor are all chronically substance-misusing people homeless. And so it's, it's an important distinction that bears emphasizing. Since 2017, we've had 2,500 overdose fatalities in Pima County. That was the year that we first started really delving into the detail of what was killing folks. And what you can see is that during that period of time, we've experienced some very significant growth, and that most of the time, half of the time, rather, it is not just one substance that is killing people, it is multiple substances. And by the way, the second most common substance is methamphetamines. More recently, can you advance that, Nico? More recently, the focus has been on fentanyl, and whereas the county had been relatively spared from the scourges of fentanyl in particular, it most, in the last three years, that has not been the case, and approximately 50 to 60% of overdose deaths are now associated with fentanyl. What is particularly troubling about fentanyl is the fact that it is so ubiquitous, so affordable, and so readily accessible. So it has become in many ways sort of the drug of choice for abuse. We have, the board has taken action to, to accept, to participate in the National Opioid Settlement, and we have started to receive the first tranche of that money, approximately $3 million, and are beginning to think through how to use those resources. That information, in fact, you have an agenda item number 41 that is specific to that, and Dr. Cullen will talk about kind of the process that she's going through in that area, and really some new ideas about how we might bring some coordination and collaboration across jurisdictions and across agencies in order to address fentanyl in particular. Next slide.
Sure.
Supervisor Heinz.
Just really quickly, while you're transitioning, that last graphic, that showed what appeared to be a huge drop-off in fentanyl fatalities for 2023, and I just think it's important to clarify that there isn't a huge drop-off. It's simply we haven't gotten that far into the year. So I just wanted to make sure to clarify that for everyone.
Chair Gruhava, Supervisor Heinz, that's two months' worth of data, so you're absolutely right that it should not be seen as a improvement.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair, Board, Ms. Lesher. As you see on this slide here, this is a delineation of some of the efforts we've done in the past four years, including the deaths and the amount of resources that have been available to us at the Health Department. I want to reiterate what Dr. Garcia has had, starting in 2015, the Community Health Needs Assessment identified substance abuse and behavioral health as issues for the community. In 2019, a strategic plan survey, 2020, that we did at the Health Department, identified from the community that homelessness was the, and housing was the major concern. In the most recent CHINA, the Community Health Needs Assessment, we once again see behavioral health and substance abuse as two of the four primary areas that the community, including the healthcare community, believes we need to focus on. As you can see from this slide, there are many initiatives that we have undertaken at the Health Department. Dr. Garcia did indicate that later on your agenda is an ask for additional funding from the opioid settlement. This will be our first ask from that, to supply us with more fentanyl, excuse me, with more Narcan. At the current time, we are distributing approximately 1,200 to 1,500 doses of Narcan in the community in a month. Approximately 20,000 kits are distributed. In addition, we are distributing fentanyl test strips. We are working with a multi-collaborative coordination of the community. This is being coordinated through the Board of Health, which you may recall, you've received an update on that with the establishment of a Substance Misuse Advisory Committee. That committee, that committee has endorsed approximately 30 advisors. We are in the process of meeting with those advisors and community members in five community-based meetings. We have done three of them, two are virtual, three are in-person. They are being conducted at the libraries. From that work, what we are attempting to identify are best practices. We are also engaged in applying for a CDC OD2A overdose-to-action grant. This funding just became available for localities. It has been available for states and what are called tier, tier-one cities like Phoenix. We get a small amount of money from them, about approximately $450,000 from the state that we have used to respond to best practices for overdose-to-action. These include things like harm reduction, which is what you see us doing with fentanyl, with the Narcan, and with the fentanyl test strips, linkages to care. What that means is that we provide a small number of navigators that work with the emergency rooms and other situations where there is someone that may be amenable to getting treatment. Now, I want to reiterate that this is an, this is a huge problem. The Health Department believes that we are an important part of the solution, but by ourselves, we will be unable to address this. So we have been in discussions with the Pima County Administration about the establishment of a multi-agency collaborative effort that would include a framework that may be familiar to you, the sense of having an emergency response, an operating center. What that would mean is that the parts that we know we need, we know we need logistics, we know we need policy, we need discussion, we need communications, we need action, we need data. We don't know everything we should be doing. We are working with national experts, some of whom live in the Tucson area, to help inform us. We are working with our youth through our $207. We believe that that is a very at-risk community. It really does embody homelessness and substance abuse and behavioral health issues. You all know the amazing work youth on their own does, Yodo does. We're working closely with them. We have a large communication campaign with them. But what I say to people is every time we are administering Narcan while we are saving a life, and that is critical, we now are creating a need, and we have an opportunity, hopefully, to come up with some interventions that we can use at that time. So I think that that's the update. We are using all the resources we have available to us. We sit on approximately 20 committees in the county as well as the city that are addressing these issues, but the numbers themselves speak to the ongoing onslaught and devastation that is occurring because of this substance abuse issue.
Any additional information, items, board members, questions? I do think it's really timely that you're coming to talk about these issues because it's something that we hear, the call to the audience, as you heard, wondering what we're doing, and I think it's important that during this item, we provide a lot of those updates, so the community is aware of what programs we are doing, maybe things that we've tried that are showing some success, focusing energies on other things. Any other questions? Supervisor Scott?
Thank you. Chair Gruhava, your comments anticipate the question that I had for Ms. Lesher, Dr. Garcia, Dr. Cullen. I really appreciated the memorandum that came to the board that previewed all of the content from this presentation, because in each one of those years, you listed achievements for that, for that particular year, and some of them you could trace back to some of these grant programs that we have availed ourselves of. And yet, I don't think there is near the public understanding of not only what Pima County is doing, but the kind of public outreach that perhaps we should be doing to find out what else we could be doing. So I wanted to know, what kind of a communication strategy do we have so that the public is more aware of the content that the board was made aware of in the memorandum that previewed today's presentation?
Chair Gruhava, Supervisor Scott, much of this information is available on the website, if not all, but what I'm hearing suggested as well is that we combine that in some way in a package that we can provide broader information to the community about this issue. And I think part of that is, as Dr. Cullen mentioned, we are convening a centralized incident command, if you will, because as we begin to discuss the issue with the business community and our outside partners, realizing that historically we have relied on the Health Department, behavioral health, what we look at is the usual suspects, but more and more we're realizing the need to involve the Flood Control District and Natural Resources, Parks and Recreation, where we have public spaces where we're seeing potential drug misuse as well. So we're pulling that all together and happy to provide a delineated plan for a communications plan to the board.
Yeah, I appreciated all the different departments that were involved in that, many of them under Dr. Garcia, some of them under Mr. DeBonis and Mr. Holmes. So I know it's an all-hands-on-deck effort. I didn't know all the things that we had been doing on behalf of the people of this county to try and take on this scourge, and I just think that we need to do more to make sure that the public at large is aware of everything that you have been doing.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you so much for being here. And then if you could attach, Melissa and I just talked, if we could attach that, this slideshow to the item, I think it would be helpful, so we can refer people to it in case anyone has questions. Okay. Thank you. And thank you so much for your patience.
Can we also attach the memorandum that was sent to the board?
I believe that is attached.
Is it?
I think so.
Because this was for item 12.
Oh, correct. No, I'm sorry. I was, I was already moving on to 13. Yes, if we could attach the memorandum, that would be great. Thank you so much for that catch. Okay, item 13, impact on Pima County of the announced end of federal public health emergency on May 11, 2023, and recommendations to implement necessary policy modifications. County Administrator Lesher.
Thank you, Chair Gruhava, members of the board, recognizing that in the first week of February of 2020, we had the first report from the county administrator to the board to talk about the pandemic that we saw coming into the community, and since that time, there have been over 250 differing or different boards' policies, procedures, a variety of other activities related to that. And while many have been unwound in the last year or so, we wanted to make sure that with the declared end of the emergency and the pandemic, which is scheduled by the president to occur on May 11th, that we've really reviewed all of the last of the regulations that are before the board, and that we get action to eliminate any of those previously approved activities. The first bucket of those are a variety of issues that have come up about facilities. We would then, as part of this resolution, recommend the end of things that we have required previously, including things like the signs and elevators, any of the social distancing requirements, suggested use of masks, et cetera. All of those physical ideas would come down. We also had a COVID-specific-related leave provided by the federal government, excuse me, that was used in the initial days. That did end, actually, in April of 2021. Employees who have joined since that time, I have not received that, but believing that at this point, since we do not have the continued mandate that people stay home under specific requirements and COVID would be considered the way we look at any of the other potential problems facing an employee, cold, flu. problems facing an employee, cold, flu, et cetera, we are asking for the same kinds of availability of leave, including sick, for example. And then we had a variety of human resources-related activities that remain on the books that deal, again, with face masks, vaccines, what happens if you test positive for COVID, et cetera, employee quarantine times. All of those have been delineated, and we request that all of those be ended at this point.
Madam Chair.
I can just let her go, County Administrator Lesher, go through the presentation, and then I'll come back for questions.
One more thing, and then we're done. But I think the last piece is simply that previously, we had provided additional incentives for vaccine boosters or the vaccine itself. What we are recommending now is that a COVID vaccine or booster be considered the same way we consider other things in terms of, it is not a requirement at all. We do have a wellness program in the county that allows employees to receive points for a variety of healthy activities. And if you receive enough points, you can get a discount on what you might pay for your insurance. So we're asking that rather than being additional points or larger amount of points, that it simply be one of the available items for consideration by an employee if they participate in our wellness program. So again, the documents before you delineate all of that, but our ask is that we finally approve the end of all the various rules and regulations that have been in place regarding the pandemic.
Thank you. Supervisor Bronson.
Yes, how many employees, county employees, are going to, and this is in regard to human resources and Board of Supervisors policy, I think it's C 2.9, the temporary policy, how many employees will be losing their federal emergency paid sick leave, the 80 hours?
Chair, I'm sorry, Chair Gruh, Supervisor Bronson, we have about 3,000 employees who still have some part of that leave that remains on the books, anywhere from zero to the 80 hours approved.
All right, thank you. I'm really not comfortable deleting that. I don't think we should, I think we should allow our employees, whatever remaining balance county employees have, 80 hours or the remaining balance that can be used at any time as the individual wishes, as in sick or vacation leave, and no balance can be rolled over, converted to sick time on his or her anniversary. And I'd like to make that motion, I'd like to make that as a motion.
And I'll second it.
Just in the memo, thank you, I have a motion by Supervisor Bronson, a second by Supervisor Christie. In the memo, it says, "In accordance with previous action of the Board of Supervisors, on February 25, any remaining converted pandemic leave vacation could be used at any time or paid out upon the separation of the employee." So have we already done something with that?
Chair Bronson, I'm sorry, Chair Gruh, there were several buckets available of the leave. This is simply the last of the federal leave, again, that we provided up until April 21. Current rules would only allow the employees to keep that and use it, rather, up until the end of this fiscal year. But we have never, because of the federal dollar, it is a federal requirement, we have not allowed employees to take any remaining funding with them or a balance when they left, simply to use it before they do so.
And I guess my issue here is that if we're eliminating everything else, we're not requiring employees to stay home if they have COVID, our COVID numbers are reducing or at least staying at a low level, and this was federally funded, and we're losing the federal funding, is the assumption then, I guess Supervisor Bronson, I'll ask you, that those hours of leave, will then the Pima County budget will pick that up?
Yes, and the reality is, the people who did not use it and who actually came to work, we're penalizing if we don't allow them this bucket.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
On the...
Well, there's a motion on the floor.
No, no, I know, he had a question. I thought you were...
I'm sorry.
So did we want to take this in piecemeal? We're going to just vote on the vacation hours first and then go back and look at the rest of the policies?
Yeah, that's what's my intent with the question.
Okay, all right. So I guess we have a motion, a second, specifically just about the 80 hours of vacation leave that are the remainder. And do we have any information on the budget impact for those hours?
Chairman Gruh, as long as the employees are not allowed to take that time as money when they leave, there is no specific budget impact, other than productivity necessarily. We pay employees for 2,080 hours a year, whether they use that in some ways as pay or vacation leave of some kind.
So is that part of your motion, that that's not something that can be then cashed out?
Yes.
And is there a limit to how far they're going to be able to transfer that from year to year, just on the books for as long as the employee is with Pima County? Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Bronson?
Yes.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Heinz?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Yes, item passes unanimously. So now we'll keep going through the rest of the document. Supervisor Christie, did you have a question?
Yes. Did you want to go through the document to have action on it?
Well, I think that there was an assumption that we were going to have action on the bulk of it, because I think it requires action.
There's one item that's not addressed in the report. It has to do with eliminating certain items under human resources. It says that administrative procedure 23-55, COVID-19 vaccinations, those will be removed as a job requirement. My question is, has there been any discussion or any thought about COVID vaccine, separated employees who have been rehired? And have they received any back pay? And is there any resumption of their status once they were terminated or separated? And this needs, I think, is something very important to be addressed. Someone did not submit to the vaccination, they were separated, terminated from the county, they left, they came back and were rehired, but at a lower rate and at a lower status.
Administrator Lesher.
Chair Gruh, Supervisor Christie, there were 19 individuals who were separated as a result of the vaccine mandate. I believe they have all returned to employment, but I don't have that at my fingertips. I am not aware of a situation in someone was brought back at a lower rate, but might have been rehired into their existing, into their previous position. What I'm happy to do is provide the board with a full report to make sure that the 19 is correct or to let you all know how many people were terminated under the vaccine mandate, how many have been back, in what status, and how their jobs may have changed or not.
And if they're not in their previous status and they have not received back pay, would they?
Chair Gruh, Supervisor Christie, not without some sort of policy direction or action from the board, they have not been.
So you'll provide a status of how many employees, how many were rehired, what their status is vis-à-vis what it was before they were terminated, and the amount of back pay that could come to them should the board take action?
Chair Gruh, Supervisor Christie, yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Are there any questions, any more questions about this memo? If we can take action on the rest of it and then...
I'll move the rest.
I'll second. I have a motion by Supervisor Bronson, I second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, item passes 4-1. Well, did you want to vote in favor? Yes, 5-0, unanimous. Okay, thank you. Now we're going to move on to item 14, fiscal year 2023, 2024, recommendation, recommended budget framework.
Thank you, Chair Gruh, members of the board. As long as the board doesn't have different direction, we really don't even need action today, but others, to simply reiterate, a variety of policies, three primarily, that have been adopted by the board in the past and will be used as we develop this next budget. The first is to maintain our policy D 2212, which is the general fund capital improvement or the pay-as-you-go program at the 60-60 split, which is 60% of the increase in the primary tax base, 60% of the cumulative decrease in the secondary property tax for debt service. The second item would be the, again, implementing the board policy adopted in 2021, which would pass through to the property owners, the cost of any expenses that have been transferred by the state to the county through the legislature. And then the final, number three, was to maintain the 17% fund balance, which is about $93 million, as adopted by the board previously. Just to make sure, as we've closed the books, Ms. Moulton and those from the Finance Department are pulling together the budget for the next year, and these are obviously three critical elements that we have recommended and the board has approved in the past, just wanting to bring them to the board's attention. Again, no action needed if we want to just move forward and make sure that these are the policy direction of the board.
Any questions, board members? Supervisor Christie, then Supervisor Bronson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your report, Ms. Lesher, I just have to read this, and maybe you could help me gain clarity on this, because you state here, "As stated in the October 4, 2022 memorandum, all departments were provided a base budget. Any request for a budget above the base budget was submitted via a supplemental request with few exceptions. Departments submitted more than $61 million in additional funding requests. Of those requests, there are approximately $20 million in requests for additional general fund report. These do not have an identified funding source. As a part of my recommended budget that I will submit to the board on April 28, I will provide a summary of the supplemental requests that I am recommending for approval along with the funding plan for those requests. Additionally, I will provide a listing of the unfunded supplemental requests that are not included in my recommended budget." I'm looking at it like, okay, everybody's going to have a base budget. Now, if you want more than that, you can fill in a supplemental request. We don't know where the funding is going to come for that, but we will provide you with a list of these supplemental requests. And once we determine the supplemental requests, we still haven't identified a funding source, so...
Thank you, Chair Gruh, Supervisor Christie. What we're just trying to explain is this, what we did, as we, I've heard some people suggest we had zero base budgeting, we did not. What we did is take this year's budget and assume that that is the base. We then went out to the departments to see if they were looking at adjustments, and we received about $61 million worth of supplemental requests for a larger budget next year. We could not fund those. We have identified about $20 million so far that we believe we can fund and could be funded and recommended for funding under this, when we bring the budget forward. We would not recommend budgets to you and say, "We don't have the money for this. We're going to make sure that you see exactly how those would be funded." But we do believe that the board should see and look at the $41 million in requests that we may not be recommending move forward, because we may not believe it has a funding source, but that would be a time for the board if they wish to say, for example, you have not recommended funding supplemental X that came in for a certain department at a certain amount, and we believe, County Administrator, that you should have funded that, and we recommend that that go in. Our main concern is, we took the base budget, we took supplementals, we're combining what we believe we can pay for, and then making sure that you see, however, what departments have requested, that we had, if you will, denied at this point.
Okay. Supervisor Bronson.
Actually, I was going to piggyback on what Supervisor Christie just outlined, and that is, if we are doing some, or funding some supplementals, could we also see the impact that has? I assume that most of these supplementals are going to be general fund.
Chair Gruh, Supervisor Bronson, a mix of all, but yes, the ones that we're really watching closely are those general fund dollars.
Yeah, and then the impact that has on property tax.
On the tax rates.
The tax rate, right.
Yes.
And very quickly, Madam Chair.
Well, I just want to make a comment, then I'll call on you, Supervisor Christie. The budget stabilization fund, part of that, you're listing compensation study implementation, so that's the salary compensation study? Is that correct?
Yes.
And then inflation and personnel hiring policy changes, all of those are included in your budget framework?
Yes.
Is that correct? Because there's been a lot, many departments, many employees have reached out regarding what's going on with the compensation study, so I just wanted to make a public statement that that, the compensation and whatever comes from that study has already been budgeted for in the amount of $14 million in this upcoming budget. Supervisor Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very quickly, I would just ask that in your navigations of the budget, that the tax rate be as revenue-neutral as possible, because property assessments have been rising and have risen dramatically.
Chair Gruh, Supervisor Christie, yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. So we don't need any action on this item? Supervisor Scott.
I just had a question, because if I'm one of the department heads that didn't have a, well, I'm sorry, department, could be department head or elected official...
Correct.
...that didn't have their supplemental requests funded, but you're going to send it to the board. I know that you can share some guidelines with appointed department heads about how they might follow up with the board in terms of how they might lobby for their supplemental requests, but the elected officials can just go full bore. So I'm a little concerned with that kind of activity that could be coming the way of the board.
That's why we have the budget purse strings.
Well, and Chair Gruh, Supervisor Scott, if the concern is about the, providing you all a list of the supplementals that we're not recommending, and if you think people will be responding to that or lobbying about that, we'd welcome your guidance. Again, my sense was for full transparency to allow you all to see what departments had asked for and what we're not recommending.
Well, I appreciate you saying that, because to me, you've gone through a process as the county administrator, and you're presenting to us the recommended budget, and we should be passing on the recommended budget that you and your team went through that process to develop. So my personal preference is not to get a listing of unfunded supplemental requests.
Chair Gruh, if I could get a nod, maybe, if that is the, if people are concerned about that or not, perhaps, if a member of the board would like to, you know, talk with me in greater detail about what the totality of the supplemental requests has been, I am happy to have that conversation.
Okay, thank you. Any other? All right. So there was no action requested on that. Thank you for the update. And then item 15 is community and workforce development, a really significant funding opportunity for so many of our outside agencies. So this is the Revised Outside Agency Advisory Committee Funding Recommendations for Fiscal Year 22, 23. I'll move approval.
Second.
So have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There are just some really amazing programs, and having worked with one of them for like 25 years before this job, I just, I had the opportunity to listen to so many of these organizations do presentations to outside agency, and all of us as board members have a person on that committee, and so I know that we've had the opportunity to get updates there, but I'm really glad to do it. Yes.
Chair Gruh, thank you, and I appreciate the fact that there's a new website that Administrator Lesher and her team have been working on that I think is going to give us some more information and transparency about the outside agency process and how people can become part of that process. I'm appreciative of how even-handed we were with these additional funds. Each qualified entity got close to $1,500 additional, and I think that was very even-handed. And I just want to thank Ms. Lesher and her team for everything that they're doing to not only make the board more aware of how this process unfolds, but the community as a whole.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
Point of order, we have one of our members absent. Should we do roll call or wait for his return?
I was just going to do all in favor and then say 4-0.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. So have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, item passes 4-0 with Supervisor Heinz. Oh, I hear him. Are you a yes for the outside agency? Thank you. 5-0. Sorry, the meeting's going long, so everyone's having to take little breaks. I get it. Okay, so we've already addressed item 16. Now we're on 17. Um, I was going to suggest unless there's any objection that we put together item 17, 18, 19 through 22. So 17 through 22. Any objection? Supervisor Scott?
No objection, but I know that Mr. Ackerly is here probably from the Treasurer's Office and I didn't know if he had anything that he wanted to say about item number 19.
Mr. Happy will be. Are you here for, in case of question? Okay, great. So any objection to 17, 17 through 22? I'll go ahead and move those items.
Second.
I have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Now we're on item 24. Let's see, 24, 25 and 26. Have any objection to moving those together?
Chair Gudihova.
Supervisor Scott?
I just had a question for number 26 and I'm going to have a similar question for an item on the addendum. What are we allowed to know or discuss publicly about this case, Mr. Brown? Because obviously it's something that predates this, this board's tenure.
Mr. Brown?
Chair Gudihova, Supervisor Scott, I recommend if we want to have a discussion about this case, that we do so for legal discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So we're moving 24 through 26.
Second.
Okay, I have motion.
Chair Gudihova.
Supervisor Scott?
If, given what Mr. Brown just said, can we move 24, 26 and addendum item number four?
Um, sure, if there's.
Yeah, I'll, I'll step aside.
Okay, so I'll go ahead. So will I. So item four, addendum item four, 24, 25 and 26 on the regular agenda. Okay. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Item 27.
I'll move the item.
All second.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
I just have to make some comments that this is a, I understand the requirements of artwork being a percentage of the construction. This is for $180,000 over two years to provide for artist service for the office of medical examiner and the program goals are to design and fabricate an art piece for a new office of the medical examiner's building in compliance with the 1% public art policy. And the public benefit is art will engage the office of the medical examiner, staff and visitors to highlight the important work the facility provides to the community. So we're going to have the public come into the medical examiner's office and look at artwork?
I believe it was part of the schematics.
Is this inside or out?
No, I, I believe it was part of the schematics of the project when they showed, when there was a groundbreaking, but I'll go ahead and turn it over to County Administrator Lesher.
Chair Gudihova, Supervisor Christie, we have a, the county guidelines and I'm looking to Mr. DeBonis if it's the policy or where the code that specifies the percent of every capital project be used for art.
I, I understand that. I'm just curious how, how you're, how we're going to create art in the medical examiner's office for visitors who really don't want to be there anyway. Never mind.
Chair, Chair Gudihova and Supervisor Christie.
Yes.
Many of the visitors to the office of the medical examiner are not alive, so.
That's what I'm saying. They're not getting benefit from the art.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed.
Just a comment. It's zombie art, right?
Okay, no. Four and then Supervisor Hindson, sorry?
I'm recusing myself from voting.
Okay, so the item passes four zero. So now we're on items, can I put together items 28 and through 30?
Mine is 31.
31. 31. 28 through 31. Okay, I'll go ahead and move those. Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Christie.
28 is to provide $2.8 million to Catholic Community Services for shelter to families and food. 29 is to provide $823,000 to the city of Tucson for emergency food and shelter. Number 30 is the Inn of Arizona is to receive $135,000 for emergency food and shelter. Just want to read very quickly some of the background. All of these items seem to be under some sort of a new funding source and I, if I'm not, not incorrect, the funding source in, I think all of them except the last one, Emergency Food and Shelter National Board Program pursuant to continuing appropriations and Ukraine Supplemental Appropriations Act. And if we look at the, the background as far as the money's being spent, it appears that the funding is reflecting in, it's like somebody spun the odometer backwards. We're, we're coming back to zero. For instance, if we look at item 28, they're receiving $2.89 million, but this is also the same topic of receiving money that we've had up to now for sheltering, emergency food for homeland security, things of this nature. So what is the, the status? Is it a new funding source or the same funding under a new name, going to a different mission or the same mission, but just running back the, the spending to zero it out?
Chair, Chair Gudihova, Supervisor Christie, this is a new contract for the FEMA EFSP, the Emergency Food Shelter. It started, it's a funding period of April 1st to September 30th. It is zeroed on this because it is a new contract. If you would like, we're happy to provide a report to the board and the public that shows how much we have spent to date in all of the grants combined.
New, but that would be great, but, but you say it's a new funding source, but it's the same, it's the same mission.
It's a new contract.
New contract, but for the same mission?
Yes, sir.
So, okay, but it's, it's coming from a different source?
It is, it's all the FEMA EFSP money, but it is a new contract.
All of the FEMA EFP money, but it is a new contract.
Yes, sir.
Same we're dealing with in 29, back to zero, a new contract and on 30, the same applies there. And then on 31, this is COVID-19 medical support for refugee populations in the, in the amount for $750,000. We're, we're still providing refugee populations or any populations COVID emergency funding?
Chair Gudihova, Supervisor Christie, this amendment to the premier contract is purposely very short, ending with what we, when we know that the pandemic will be formally declared and the emergency ending May 11th. This is to provide what services we may need in this amendment six for that shorter period of time through the end only of the fiscal year, I believe. Dr. Garcia, is there additional information?
That's it. Any other questions?
I just want to point out that what the, the funding period begins today.
Correct.
And it goes to July 1st, but May something or other is when the pandemic is officially over. So is this one of these items where we are keeping it open to the, to July, so we spend all the money because we haven't spent it yet?
No. Chairman Gudihova, Supervisor Christie, it is open with a cap so that we can be sure that any of the bills that may come in from the provider, we can be paid. If we do not spend the full amount of, of money, it can be returned or not, and simply not used.
Okay. And then finally on number 28, this is going to Catholic Community Services in the two, in the amount of $2.8 million. Over half of that 2.8 coming to one point, just under 1.467, half of that is going to personnel, to staffing. Food, supplies, security, out-of-state transportation are nowhere near what it is for personnel. Whatever happened to World Dining and the contract we had at the ViCao?
Administrator Lesher.
Chair Gudihova, Supervisor Christie.
Dr. Garcia.
Absolutely. Chair Gudihova, Administrator Lesher, Mr. Christie, Supervisor Christie. So this is the, this is the component that pays for the staffing that Catholic Community Services has onsite to manage these folk. So some of that work is done by volunteers, but a lot of that work is actually managed by professional staff of Catholic Community Services who are now operating out of those four different locations that we currently maintain. So World Dining contract is a separate contract that has to do with the provision of food. It's not actually serving people. It's actually the production and provision of the actual food stuff and that is actually provided to the contractor, in this case Catholic Community Services, who gets it to the folks.
So that contract's still in effect, the World Dining?
Chair Gudihova, Supervisor Christie, yes.
But it's not reflected in this budget?
Chair Gudihova, Supervisor Christie, yes.
Okay. And then I just want to point out as well that in the compensation and list of unallowable costs under number four, it says costs requiring prior approval by the Pima County Grants and Management Director. A, out-of-state travel for asylum seekers other than United Airlines. Does United Airlines fly into Tucson?
No. Chair Gudihova, Supervisor Christie. They fly out of Phoenix and we do have as part of our shuttle services and the ability for either the volunteers or other individuals to transport the asylum seekers to Phoenix for them to then travel onto their next destination.
And to their next destination, and that leads me to number, to item B under the same heading of four. It says that requires prior approval of the Pima County GMI Director. B, hotel stays over 30 days for non-COVID positive asylum seekers with no sponsors. I thought they couldn't get into this country without a sponsor and that they were just here for a couple of days while moving on, but apparently they're staying here 30 days and not having a sponsor?
And I will ask Dr. Garcia in a moment, but Chair Gudihova, Supervisor Christie, yes, the, I believe our average is three days, two to three days before people move on. Again, if they haven't, there has been instances, and I will see if this is part of it, we have had individuals come here that then were, had a difficult health situation, might have been in the hospital, been pregnant and unable to travel. There have been a few instances in which those anomalies or outliers occurred. And Dr. Garcia, if you could speak to that, please.
Chair Gudihova, Supervisor Christie, Administrator Lesher, you're absolutely correct. The typical stay for the individuals that are interfaced with by Catholic Community Services is actually less than 72 hours. The program is relatively efficient at getting the vast majority of individuals out.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, Dr. Garcia, how did, how did those folks get here without a sponsor?
Chair Gudihova, Supervisor Christie, I can't speak to the federal process.
Well, this, I have to just make a comment. This has been the, the party line by the folks that want to spend all this money. For as long as I've been on the board, we've been dealing with it, is that they're just here for a couple of days and they're passing on through to their final destination. And the only way they can come in this country is they have to have a sponsor who pays for their transportation and for the expenses to get them to their quote, "final destination", but they're coming in without a sponsor.
Chair Gudihova, Supervisor Christie, I can tell you that there have been painfully few, as in less than a handful of instances of the thousands and thousands of individuals that have been interacted with since 2019 who have been in that capacity where for whatever reason, you know, the feds.
Administrator, Administrator Lesher and then.
Chair Gudihova, Supervisor Christie, I'm happy to reach out to Customs and Border Patrol and see what the exact numbers may have been. What has occurred at times is when Customs and Border Protection pulls up into the facility and drops off a busload of people. There have been perhaps a handful or less for which I would suggest that Customs and Border Protection and the federal government have done, not done the scrub completely. We are unable to give them back to CBP at that point and the concern has been either to release these people on the streets of Pima County, which does not seem like the best way to protect our citizens or to help them move on. I can get from you and will be happy to provide the board with a full report on exactly when that may have occurred.
Now, that would be great. And do we take any folks from the FEMA operation at, at Los Rialos? Do they, are they released into our welcoming centers?
Administrator Lesher, Dr. Garcia.
Chair Gudihova, Supervisor Christie, I believe that to be a completely separate operation. Those are, it's, they're not, there may be people who have come across the border illegally. It is not the program with which we are dealing.
So to the best of your knowledge, we're not receiving any folks coming into this country through FEMA at that Los Rialos? Los Rialos?
Not, Chair Gudihova, Supervisor Christie, I don't believe from FEMA. I believe it is another component of the Department of Homeland Security, either ICE or CBP. But FEMA, which as a division, is the group that has funded us, which is why we see them.
So who, who is in charge of that Los Rialos operation?
Chair Gudihova, I believe it's CBP. Is it ICE or, it's Customs and Border Protection?
CBP. Okay. Thank you. Do we have a motion, a second? Forgotten at this point. Okay. So items 28 through 31, I have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes four one, Supervisor Christie voting no. Items, let's see, is there any opposition to trying to go through the rest of the agenda except for the hearings? So 32 through 47?
Madam Chair, could we pull 37 separately?
37.
But other, through 42, I could go through 44.
We already did 41.
Right.
Yep.
So through 44?
I would like to have a discussion on 37.
So 32 through 44 with the exception of?
37.
37 and then we already did 41. Okay? Can I get a motion? I'll, I'll move that second. Have a motion, a second by Supervisor Bronson. Any additional discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Now we're on item 37. Supervisor Christie.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'll move the item for purposes of discussion.
I'll second.
This is the compensation report through CBIZ that we originally contracted to the amount of $75,000. And they are now asking for additional money and it says that the reason for this additional money, I'm sorry, they're asking for $75,000 more when we've already expended $383,000 for them and they are saying that they need this extra money because the increase is needed to exercise the options to include drafting of job classifications in the project. And if we look at the memorandum, it, it states that the original scope of this contract, I'm missing my documents, but what it basically said was that the original scope was to, to provide these classifications. Now they're asking for more money to provide classifications?
Administrator Lesher.
Chair Gudihova, Supervisor Christie, when CBIZ bid on this, they included a variety of items. It was one of the items included in their proposal that was accepted was $75,000 to work on and complete all of the various job descriptions necessary under the new classifications. The funding for that one option was not included in the initial, the original contract that came to you. We would like to exercise that option and get the additional assistance with the new classifications as there's significant change to those and we want to get that finished prior to the finalization of the budget. So we are recommending that we go ahead and include and fund that option.
Administrator Lesher, so we're adding to the scope and that's why we're, we're adding to the scope and that's why they're asking for the increase?
Right. It had been in the proposal. It was in the items. It was in the items. It was an additional item that we had the ability to include, and now we are asking that we exercise that option.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, so we're saying that the scope of the study was to create a new job architecture framework that will align employees into specific job classifications, and that was in the original scope of the study, and now they're not, it's not in the scope of the study and they're asking for more money?
Administrator Lesher.
Chair Gruh Hava Supervisor Christie, the job descriptions had not been part of the overall general compensation and classifications. We're now looking for some of the additional work that we can look at to make sure that all of the new job descriptions correctly fit within a new classification study. And that is the option we're wishing to exercise.
Okay. And Madam Chair, just to conclude, it says in the county administrator's memorandum that in order to comply or follow the study, it's going to require $11.5 million towards moving employees who fall below the new salary grade, and it's going to cost an additional $2.5 million in contingency to be used towards the adjustments needed to move current employees to the correct place. So we're being asked to approve $14 million to implement a plan in salary adjustments for a study we haven't seen yet.
If I may, Chair Gruh Hava Supervisor Christie, we have not asked you to look at that at this point. What we've indicated is that we believe that if we were to look at the results of the study, which you've not, just a beginning, the initial analysis of looking at the report when it came in, we estimate what would cost about $11 million if this board choose to implement that policy. In addition to that, there's some of what we generally look at as smoothing or how we adjust around individuals when they come in under new salaries. We, as I say, nothing has been approved by the board relating to the, either the acceptance of the class comp study or the full impact potentially of the class comp study. But as we are building the budget, we do believe it was important to at least begin to put in the placeholder to see what we estimate the cost would be. We also have at this point, and I think we've mentioned to the board before, a estimate of about $11 million, which would be if we just provided a 3% across the board. We are looking at placeholders of what it might cost to implement the study should the board wish to do so.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed.
No.
Item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. And now we're on to 45. So I'll go ahead and move 45 through 47.
Madam Chair, could we? We move item, what, 46 is designed to fund all of the programs we just passed.
Correct.
So this is the funding source for those programs? Okay. So if we could deal with 46 separately or?
We'll just do 45. 45, acceptance of Grants Management Innovation and Innovation Grant. I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. 46, acceptance of Department of Health and Human Services grant. I'll move the item.
Second.
A motion in a second. Supervisor Christie, did you want to speak on this or just vote no?
No, I'll just vote no. And Madam Chair, I'm sorry, on 45, if I could change my vote to a no?
Sure. So 45 is?
45 is no and 46 is no.
Okay. So we haven't done 46 yet, but 45 is four to one Supervisor Christie voting no. Item 46, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed.
No.
Item passes 4-1 with Supervisor Christie voting no. Acceptance of Pima Animal Care Center, Best Friends Animal Society. I'll go ahead and, and I'll second. Supervisor Bronson moves the item. I'll second. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Now we're on to public hearings. We have 48, 49, 50, 51, our liquor licenses, and 52 and 53 are fireworks permits. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak in opposition of any of these items? Okay. So since we don't have anyone?
Yeah, I'll move to close public hearing and approve.
And approve items 48 through 53. I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Now we're on, where are we?
56.
Jeez. We jumped around a little bit on this agenda.
Yep.
Didn't we? Okay. Thank you. 56, we have a zoning text amendment. 57 is rezoning ordinance. 58 rezoning and 59 rezoning resolution. I'll go ahead unless there's opposition. Is there anyone in the audience to speak in opposition of any of these items? So no, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move items 56 through 59.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion in a second by Supervisor Scott. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Now we're on to the addendum. We have addressed addendum item one. Now we just have, oh, three.
Yes, and I brought this item on the agenda. I was hoping.
You did, or Supervisor Scott? Oh, it's a request by you. Okay, thank you. Go ahead. Supervisor Bronson, the item is Pima Association of Governments and Regional Transportation Authority Report. Supervisor Bronson.
And I was listening to the last PAG RTA and noted with the RTA, and this is my concern, I don't want to belabor this, but the, it's the First Avenue project that has changed scope dramatically. And it's at the tail end of our regular RTA. And my question is, it was supposed to be six lanes. It's now down to four, and the actual construction is close to the end of the original 20-year plan. And it looks like it's going to cost more with the four lanes than it will, than was originally in the plan for the six lanes. And then it, you know, the RTA was supposed to be about capacity improvement, but this is not capacity improvement. It's a dramatic change in scope. I feel that this should go back to the voters for approval. And so that's just my concern and I just, and where's the revenue going to come from?
Supervisor Scott, did you want to address that?
Yeah, absolutely. And Supervisor Bronson, I appreciate you putting this item on the addendum. And when you did, I put as many supporting documents from the last RTA board meeting as possible as attachments to the item so that you could see some of the materials that not only we considered, and by we, I mean the Pima County team, but also the RTA Board. So for example, there were significant concerns that had been raised about roadway drainage and how that was going to be addressed. Those were coming up even last year. And so I asked Mr. DeBonis to follow up with Mr. Shep so that we could get a presentation to the RTA Board on the significant drainage issues in that area, the long-term plan for addressing them, and how those long-term plans for addressing drainage in the area didn't need to be addressed by the design concept report for the project. That's number one. Number two, I had a meeting with the executive director of PAG RTA back on March 2nd, and he expressed concerns to me about the extensive nature or lack of extensive nature of the city's outreach, public outreach program regarding the First Avenue project. He wondered whether this plan really fully laid out for the public everything that they needed to know about both the four and six lane option. Coincidentally and serendipitously, I had my weekly meeting with Administrator Lesher later that morning, asked her to call Mr. DeBonis in, and I requested that our staff contact City of Tucson's staff to find out all the outreach materials that they could share with us, many of which are attached to this item. On March 20th, which was five days before the PAG RTA meeting, I had a meeting with Administrator Lesher, Deputy Administrator DeBonis, Department of Transportation Head Catherine Skinner, and a member of my staff. And I asked, what should our position be? What should, because I don't go into these meetings voting as Rex Scott. I go in voting as the Pima County Representative. And my question was, what should our position be if, as expected, the City of Tucson moved to go forward with the four-lane option and that their outreach was robust enough? We talked about, we talked about what the language is in the PAG administrative codes about these kinds of outreach efforts. We talked about the state statute that was cited in the agenda that had to be complied with. We talked about the robust nature of the outreach, especially to businesses. We also talked about the likelihood of public confusion and frustration if we mounted a second outreach effort, especially this close to an election. And we also talked about the regional flood control report on roadway drainage. And so we decided that if the city did make that motion, that we would support it. At the RTA Board meeting, there was a motion made by the city to move forward with the four-lane project. There are nine voting members of the RTA Board. One of them was absent. Of the eight that were there, six of them voted to move forward, which is the RTA Board's right. Again, I wanted to attach as many items as I could that not only were shared with us, but also with the RTA Board. And I appreciate that you were watching that meeting so you know the fulsome nature of the discussion that we had. It was not a decision that any of the eight of us took lightly, certainly not the six who voted in favor of that motion. So I don't know if that addressed all of your concerns or questions.
Most of them, but again, I questioned the legality of doing this, the change of scope.
And I appreciate that. The very last sentence in that item said that the board, meaning the RTA Board, could vote to take the action that we did if we felt that all of our legal requirements were met. And that's why we spent so much time talking about the administrative codes and also the state statute that was cited. And we did not receive any warning from our attorney who was present during that meeting that we were in any way getting into shaky legal ground.
I disagree, but we'll have to leave it at that. I still think that it's at least from a public policy perspective and the optics don't look good.
All right. I think we've exhausted, Supervisor Heinz.
Thank you. And I'll be brief. I think that it's important to highlight examples of good governance, and this is one of them. And as Chairman Yukapicio of the Pasco Yaki Tribe said at the meeting, at this last RTA Board meeting, jurisdictions know their needs best. And as you can see in the materials that Supervisor Scott provided to us, the City of Tucson really did go above and beyond in terms of demonstrating that the four-lane option was preferable. A majority of neighbors, residents in the region supported, a majority of local businesses up and down the specific corridor supported. And, you know, again, the RTA Board voted six to two to move forward with the four-lane option, and I think that that's something that I support, and I appreciate being able to discuss this and your leadership, Supervisor Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The last item we have is item five, because we addressed four, is the Board of Health appointment of Maya Ingram to replace Renee Castellum. And this would be Supervisor Heinz. Do you want to move the item?
I move to.
You get second.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay. And so I do want to say before we vote, the Board of Health has been having a hard time getting a quorum together. And so I think that you might be getting a call from President Horwitz, letting you all know to please talk with all of your appointees because it's been very narrow. He's already called. You, all right, great. I know, but I just want to make sure that we are aware that it's been really difficult. Anyway, okay, so we have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously. Our next meeting is?
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Addendum item one.
Didn't we do that? Oh, we didn't, I thought we addressed it. I apologize. Hmm. Oh, there was no board action on it. So we, I think, this was item one. Thank you. I just assumed because we didn't do, I thought we voted no. I thought it was a no vote to go into executive session.
That's correct.
Is that right? We had a motion in a second, and it was a 3-2 to not, to not go into exec on that item?
I misunderstood. I thought that meant not to go at that time. Not at all.
You want us to vote again, just to be clear?
The clerk has it down that way.
Oh, you have it down that way? Okay, thank you.
I have it down, but you guys were not going to go into the session. We were going to talk about it in a regular session.
Right. Right. So do we have to take action on this one? Do you think specifically?
We did not talk about the purpose of this executive item yet.
Okay. So what would you like to do?
We can go to a future meeting. I know this has gone long, but I just was pointing out that we hadn't got to that discussion.
Okay. I assume that this was a discussion related to item 12, 11? 11.
I'm going to move now to go into exec.
A motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Item passes unanimously, and then if we want to bring that item back, I think we should.
Chair Gruh Hava, could I suggest that given the way this item is worded, when Mr. Brown gives us his response to the outside legal opinion, that may lay the groundwork for having a more extensive, thank you, robust discussion about board policies and rules.
Okay. Thank you. Our next meeting is Tuesday, April 18th. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.